Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting for January 18th, 2023. All members present, except for the members of the faculty. We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing we have is our middle school representatives.
Yes.
Welcome.
Ethan, you can get right up to the table and just sit right here with us. And please introduce yourself and whenever you're ready.
All right. Hello, I am Ethan, and I am the representative from the middle school. So Tuesday, January 24th, we will have the 90th day of school, and it will end the first semester. It's kind of hard to believe we're halfway through the year, and I'm getting a lot closer to high school now, and I'm excited for it. Parent conferences will happen on February 2nd from 11:10 to 1:40. Ski club for the winter is here. The weather's cooperating. Ski club's now in its third week. Let's hope Mother Nature continues to cooperate on Wednesdays. Students in grades six to eight have been enjoying the powder at Neshoba Valley for some fun New England skiing. Homework club, as the school year progresses, homework club has seen a giant boost of attendance. Students from all grades have been attending to complete homework, make up work, projects or simply collaborate with peers. It's been a great opportunity for students to complete work in a quiet, yet collaborative environment. Paw Print's virtual literary magazine has put out its 23rd edition on January 3rd. This edition was titled Holidays All Around and gave students a unique opportunity to explore different cultures from all around the world. Eighteen students contributed to the edition for a total of 29 pieces. With the winter cold, we've seen more students joining and participating in after-school sports. Students from all grades have been enjoying a variety of games. Students have especially enjoyed ultimate football and 3v3 basketball tournaments. Did you know that fortune cookies is not actually from Chinese culture? It actually comes from Japan. Students in the World Culture Club have been learning about the Chinese culture and the celebrations of Lunar New Year. It is run by Mrs. Stefano, who is also my Italian teacher. And one of the most exciting events in 2023 was Project 351 that I got to be a part of. On Saturday, I represented the town of Wilmington at the Project 351 launch organization. Project 351 is a statewide, student-led, community service organization. On Saturday, we kicked off the year by having a service day in Boston, and all the ambassadors were there from every town and city in Massachusetts, and we do a full day of service in Boston, meet up in Faneuil Hall, and it was a great day. It was honestly just a lot of fun. So there was four different community groups we went to. I was in the cradles to crayons one, and it was a lot of fun. I cleaned shoes. There were some fun ones. We found a pair of purple sparkly Crocs for like toddlers, and it was just kind of fun. It was a fun day. Everyone just made friends. And at the end of the day, combined all four, we impacted the lives of 6,152 people in one day of service. So throughout the whole year, we'll impact even more.
Fabulous.
Outstanding. Thank you, and congratulations for representing us in Project 351. Does anyone have questions or comments? Mrs. Platten?
Just that we're so proud of you, and thank you for your leadership in representing Wilmington in such a great way. Very proud of that work that you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is pack presentation from the middle school parent advisory council. Chairs. We have coming up here.
May need to project.
Thank you for being here, and if you could introduce yourselves as you begin.
My name is Jen Jackson. I am the president of the Middle School PAC.
My name's Meg Dishino, and I am fundraising coordinator of the Middle School PAC.
My name is Shannon Charity Geldart. I am the treasurer of the Middle School PAC.
Katie Shad, I'm the vice president of PAC.
And Melissa Gaviano is behind us. She is the secretary of the PAC today. So thank you for having us. We're excited to be here and tell you kind of a little bit about the work that the PAC does at the middle school level in the district. We're going to start with kind of a zoomed out view of the PAC and then kind of get a little more specific towards the end. So first of all, I'm hoping that the Venn diagram of parents who livestream school committee meetings and parents who might want to attend a PAC meeting has some intersection. So the very first thing we wanted to do is say our next meeting is the 31st, and all of our meetings are at 6 o'clock in the middle school library. So that's coming up. And something else that was really important to us is that to acknowledge that this PAC, and I don't think any PACs in the district could exist or function without the support of front office staff and custodial staff. There have been more times than I can count that these people have literally come to our aid and opened locked doors or really supported events and helped us support the school as well. And so I think we would be very remiss to not proceed without acknowledging these people who are so helpful and have really given a lot of support with probably not a lot of acknowledgement. So PAC membership at a glance, anyone who is a parent or other custodial grown-up of students at the middle school is a member of the PAC. Teachers of the middle school are members of the PAC, and administrative members are members of the PAC. And you don't have to attend meetings to be a member of the PAC. If you are in one of those groups, you are a member of the Middle School PAC. So far since September, we have had engagement from 74 parents by way of time donations or in-kind donations to events that we've supported since September, and we have 236 parents who are following events on the Facebook page. The purpose of the Middle School PAC is really kind of a four-fold purpose where we have worked with the principal and the administration, where we support programming and events that are already existing at the middle school level with the staff and the administration. We facilitate fundraising and donations, both time donations, in-kind donations, and monetary donations, and then an overall support of the mission of the middle school and its objectives and the objectives of the district. And kind of zooming a little more, one of the most important things I think that the PAC does is to kind of facilitate this exchange between all of the stakeholders who are members of the PAC, be it the teachers and the parents and other grown-ups and the administration, to make that two-way, three-way communication happen so that that can happen between all of these stakeholders. And so what we implemented starting last year was every month before our meetings, we have opened up a Q and A that Dr. Quark will get the questions from. It's just a Google form that parents or any other interested PAC members can submit a question, and Dr. Quark will answer those questions at the next meeting. If parents can't make it to that meeting, those questions and answers go in the meeting minutes. If a question is too sensitive or requires more of a private answer, Dr. Quark will reach out privately to those people who asked. So by way of student and staff support, there's kind of these four main areas that we will get into more specifically later, but there's, I think there's sometimes maybe a misconception that PACs are like party planning committees, and that's not, there is that. We do like a party. But it's not the sum total of what we do is we don't just ask for money and throw parties. I mean, we could. So we have these student events. This is a picture from the sixth grade Halloween dance that was this year. We have teacher appreciation events, student support. This is a picture from the sixth grade orientation scavenger hunt, and then kind of the idea of expanding and building new traditions. And this is just a shot from the eighth grade moving on ceremony. And I am going to turn this over to Mrs. Dishino, who is going to talk about our fundraising efforts.
All right. Well, we do like to have fun. We can't do that without money. We have all of these wonderful people and small businesses that have gone above and beyond for us so that we can do that. Red Heat, we just had a very successful dine-in, dine-out event at Red Heat, and they gave us 10% of all proceeds. We do very few fundraisers. We don't want to put a lot on the people, so the fundraisers that we do do try to be helpful, like the school supplies. That was, this year was our first year doing the school supplies, and it was successful. This year, we just opened it up to our incoming sixth graders. I think next year, we're going to open it up to all grades. Our sign fundraiser, this was something that we worked with Connolly Printing on, and we tried to give it to the sixth graders, the incoming sixth graders and the outgoing eighth graders. We weren't allowed to give it to the sixth graders this year. I'm going to try again and see if maybe that will work. We said we weren't allowed to give it to them because they weren't technically our students yet, but we wanted to start with them so that we could start branching communication between the sixth grade parents and the PAC. So I'll try again this year. Our biggest fundraiser every year is our apparel sale, and that's run by Carmen Puglisi. She's not here with us tonight, but we do that twice a year. It's very successful, and that one will continue to go. But we're going to do more of these meal restaurants going forward so that we can help support the teachers and the students as much as we can.
All right. Time to talk about the money that Meg raises. All right. So the PAC is a 501(c)(3) registered nonprofit. All of our federal and state tax filings are up to date. That's done in the fall of every year, so crossing all my Ts and dotting all my Is. Current balance as of last week is $6,045.78. I did graduate from high school.
Been attending too many fundraisers.
So for last year, our largest expenditures were the eighth grade luau and the teacher appreciation lunch. The largest fundraisers that we had, which almost made us break even, was our apparel sale. Again, Carmen Puglisi is our apparel coordinator. She's not here, and with all the efforts that she had last year, we absolutely blew out of the water any other apparel sale that has been done in the Wilmington Middle School to date, so many thanks to her. The newest fundraiser was the eighth grade lawn signs. That's something that has not been done at the PAC level, so that was great. And one thing that was really important to me and the rest of the members of the PAC is to maintain transparency regarding the finances. Everything is on a shared Google Drive. It's like an open checkbook. Everybody knows what money is going in and what money is going out. We have two names on the business account, and checks over $300 require two signatures. So there's, everybody knows what's going on. We are an open book. And one more person I wanted to mention, Kristin Buck, is on a tropical cruise somewhere. We're all very jealous. I'm pretty sure she's listening right now, but she is our social media coordinator.
And she helps, I just need to say this too, because fundraising is, you can only get so far, and with social media, Kristin Buck has been able to get to more groups than we've gotten to in years past. So she's done a phenomenal job at that.
Oh, it's me. All right. So supporting the work of WMS, we are really proud of what we have been able to evolve our PAC into. There was a lot of room for growth for us, and so over the last year, we've been able to start with a sixth grade welcome bag, and with that's a poem, and some supplies, and with, you know, the supplies match up to the poem, so they get that the first week of school. The seventh grade, they get the sticker, which is also Connolly, and they've been phenomenal with us. And we get like, you're moving up to eighth grade, you know, leaving seventh grade. And then the eighth grade, we helped Dr. Quark with the organization of the aloha dance, which was hello and goodbye. Meg wanted to do the name. And so we worked really hard with Dr. Quark to make that happen and make it as inclusive as we could financially, equitably, like so many, how many, so many students came. We had such a great turnout. And with that, we helped with the move up day and helped set up. And one thing with the gift cards on the previous slide was Random Acts of Kindness. That's something we initiated, where it was a week where other students could nominate fellow students for Random Acts of Kindness. And it was a Google form, and those kids who got nominated were put into a pool, and then their names at the end of the day were picked, and two kids received a gift card. And this is where our parents really were amazing. We put it out that we wanted to do this, and how quickly we received gift cards and the support was amazing. So every day, two students' names were drawn, and that's something we hope to continue. This year, we were able to, sorry, I need to take notes. We also donated gift cards for the World Cultural Club. Mrs. Stefano had estimation jars in the cafeteria, something they pulled during lunch, and so we were able to donate more gift cards to that, and we feel like that helped with school spirit and the community building. And we also were able to help with our, the sixth grade summer reading. We were able to donate gift cards to the students who completed their reading, and that's the picture up there. And so other things that we've implemented, new traditions, which everything we just, I just mentioned, is new traditions for us. And, oh, this Thanksgiving. So we wanted to show how we were thankful to the staff, and we made 135 mugs for each staff member. They had four options, and then the parents and students were able on a Google form to write what they were thankful for and that show their gratitudes toward staff, and those were emailed out, and we got, well, I got to deliver it, Mr. Kyra, all the mugs. It was really fun.
Let me just repeat that. We.
We physically made.
Made.
135 mugs.
They were all personalized.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, they had the teacher, if they signed up. So 100 of them were personalized, no, 90 were personalized with the teacher's name, what they wanted on it, and they chose one of four options for the picture. And I was lucky enough to be the one to go with Mr. Kyra to pass them out, and it was really fun. And the emails we received from the teachers were amazing. So that was something new, but we wanted, again, we worked for the school, like to work with the teachers, the students, and just trying to sense a community. We're grateful, the students are grateful, the parents are grateful, and there's just one way to implement that, and we're hoping to do different things every year because nobody needs that many mugs, and we're never making that money again.
No. Sorry, you all don't get one.
Yeah, no. It's hard now. What else? I think basically, I already said this. Oh, I just wanted to point out the sensory pool in the picture. That was Meg's idea, and I can't stress to you enough, Dr. Quark wanted that dance to be inclusive for everyone, and I feel like we really succeeded in how hard we worked on different foods, making sure there was something for everyone, making sure everyone who attended it was financially like available versus other options that I know people had mentioned. Yeah. It was free this year, but like there was other things. People were like, why aren't you doing this? Why aren't you doing that? Everyone could go to this. And the sensory pool was utilized, and it was the, one of the best moments of being part of PAC, seeing that used by students who needed it. And we just, we're really proud of all that we've accomplished, and we've accomplished a lot. And it's not just teacher appreciation, it's working with the students, working with the awesome administration, and like getting to work with the teachers. It's going to the dance and seeing the sixth grade teachers all decked out like the Dalmatians and 101. It was fun.
The aloha dance was amazing, but the best thing too was the next day, we were able to pull off with Dr. Quark the very first eighth grade moving on ceremony that Wilmington has ever seen, and it was so special. The kids walking up and getting the certificate and walking back, and we had a mom that took photos, individual photos of every Kate Ackerman.
Yes.
Is she up there? Do we put her?
No, she volunteered her time and took a picture of each graduate, like not graduate, but moving up student, and Dr. Quark made sure each student received their certificate with a picture, and we helped with that. And again, that was very cool to be part of, and Meg and I were lucky enough to hand the certificates to Dr. Quark, and we got to see all their cute faces, and it was fun. And we're really proud of that, and we're proud that we're able to help Dr. Quark because she has amazing ideas, and we're lucky to be able to support her.
And just looking forward, upcoming, the winter months, we spend a lot of time between planning and not a lot of events, but we're going to start in the spring fundraisers and events, and April will have an apparel sale this year. One thing that did get included here is that we are partnering with Graves Farm to do a fundraiser for Mother's Day, and the Shawshank West PAC was able to work with them in the fall, and they were great to work with, and they continue to be great to work with, so we're trying to extend things to that partnership. And then we will hopefully have another lawn fundraiser, board elections, eighth grade end-of-year support, and then we will move on to start over again in the fall with the sixth grade orientations and scavenger hunts. And then if anybody would like to find us, we are in these places. We are on Facebook, on Instagram, we have email, and we have a website.
We also have Venmo.
It's at WMSPAC, just in case.
Always bring Meg places. That's the rule. And that, that's it. Thank you.
Questions, Mrs. Platten?
So I have to, being an old, old PAC officer at the younger levels years ago, I have to say, I'm just so amazed how the group, the board has grown with regards to roles and responsibilities, and it's just, your passion speaks to it, and I just, the evolution of PAC boards within our community, I think is just spectacular, where everyone, you know, many hands make light work, and I think you all speak to that, you know, that testament. And I have to say, thank you so much for the creativity and the collaboration, because I think building those relationships with Dr. Quark and her team and creating the change of culture that we've all wanted at the middle school, and Dr. Quark has been working towards and meeting those goals collaboratively, not just with her team and staff, but with the family and parent outreach. So thank you for bridging that within the school community to move us forward, and I, because I know the dedication, and I haven't forgotten the time involved in getting these things set up and delivered and, you know, and thank you for contributing to local businesses as well. I think, I think it's a win-win for Wilmington. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Actually, yes, I'd just like to quickly, thank you so much for, for all this work. I think that the, the work that the PACs are doing in this district is wonderful, and having, having them come in over this, the course of this fall and into this, into the winter, I think has been really terrific to just see so, in such detail, how much love and effort and care is put into the work that you do. And I think that, you know, that I appreciate so much all this time that you're putting in and through such important things, you know, that this is the kind of thing that helps build that culture and sustaining cultural, you know, culture and sense of belonging in a school, that we have this, you know, partnership with parents and with the community and with the administration and the students providing, providing these opportunities. And, you know, the connection to the administration, I think that that's also just, you know, a terrific thing to do, because sometimes it's so much easier to have one place where you can send questions, and for Dr. Quark to have one time when there's a bunch of questions to work on and answer, and it can help so that everything doesn't have to be like an individual email or, you know, you try to get, change the channels of communication going in there. And so I think you're doing terrific work, and thank you so much for it.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your leadership. It's often in my experience that sometimes having you folks as part of Eric Garde leadership at the middle school level is a challenge for understandable reasons, and you persevered and said it's okay to be there, and your child's accepting, hopefully, most of the times. It's okay for you to be there, but, you know, I understand that here in Wilmington, it's not always been the case, that there's been a strong and vibrant group such as yourselves. And again, that's, that's not uncommon from my experiences, but goodos to you all and your group for persevering, and because it seems like it sounds, and you certainly it sounds, you can see and you can feel the changes of the impact, whether it's for staff or whether it's for students, and so thank you for your dedication. It's three short years, it's three critical years, as we all know, and so thank you for your dedication.
A lot of important work happening at the middle school, and you're clearly a big part of it.
I think that's one thing that we've done really well, is just because something has always been done one way, we just kind of throw that out of the window and move it fast, and, you know, really try to bring those groups together and just move forward. I mean, we've been doing, Katie and I have been doing PAC since like preschool days, so.
You said 130 mugs for each staff member. I was thinking just like, where are they going to put them all? Who has that much cupboard space?
No, he can show you the pictures.
Oh, I have plenty.
It's her entire kitchen.
Yeah, it was my entire kitchen for the entire weekend. Yeah.
Yeah, we, there's a lot of mugs.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Glad you're having fun too.
Oh, no, it's fun.
Next, we have the middle school program review update. Dr. Quark.
Well, Dr. Quark comes forward, then British, Mr. Ragsdale. So we, as a community, we've been committed to try and provide regular updates on a great deal of work that is unfolding at the middle school. Your first leadership at certainly in concert, but as well as here. And so tonight, it seems timely and an important opportunity to provide the committee and the community with some of the very important work that has been unfolding over the last three, four months, if there's any more, with Dr. Quark, with many member staff in the school, and also with the elementary and the teachers. So tonight, in the school committee PAC, and for those that might be at home who are interested in following to this presentation, you said there's a presentation here tonight that will take a few months to go through. This work came about through, you'll recall, as a point of connection back to the middle school program review last spring, and that is exactly, exactly why we are upon this important work and this important journey as we again take a look at consideration for where the school is at right now and where we'd like to move the school in the future. So with that, very welcome. Turn it to you.
I think I'm starting the presentation. Do you mind steering? You have the clicker.
Oh, sure.
So to give you an outline of what we'll talk about this evening, you can take a look at the bullets here, but we want to really get people caught up with the work that we began in our partnership with AMLE, with the consultant that came on board this fall to help, help us as a team walk through analyzing our schedule, looking at best practices and making recommendations to move forward. So we'll go through that whole process. We'll talk about what our priorities were that were determined by the group, what our data, we did a deep data dive and what that showed us about what our needs were, and ultimately what our recommendation will be at the end of this presentation. Actually, if you could go to, go to the next one first, we'll back up after. So this background really is what Dr. Brand just spoke about, and basically in the spring of 21, 22, we underwent the program review, and this was a recommendation that came out of that program review to look at the schedule. So we recruited a group of students, I mean, both volunteers from the school level and the district level to participate in this work. We scheduled it deliberately to fall within the workday so that we would be open and accessible to all employees who might have childcare issues or other commitments after the workday. So we provided sub-coverage for those who applied to participate. We recruited multiple times to try and get a wide variety of stakeholders. We didn't turn anyone away who participated in our group, and we were excited to have a decent-sized group to work with to really get stakeholder input. So if you would jump ahead one slide, sorry, I'm going out of order. So this is the group of our team members who participated in this work for three full days and then also meetings between our following after some updates as well. Okay, now if you can go back to the one slide we missed. Thank you. So the three days really looked, they each had a different focus. The first was really about. The first was really about culture and climate, so as a group, we went through a series of protocols to really help us determine the why. Why are we doing this work? Why do we want to make a schedule change? We talked about the vision and mission and belief statements of the middle school specifically. We spent some time learning from the consultant about the 18 characteristics of a successful middle school, and what that model looks like. We did some evaluation from our own perspective of how, you know, self-assessment of how we felt we were doing, we looked at all the data that we received from the survey from AMLE, and we used that information to really set cultural priorities for the school that would help us in our work going forward. So it was laying a foundation and setting that to get us started. Day two, we went through a series of protocols and activities that really had us digging deep into the data. We divided into multiple groups, some were looking at academic data, some were looking at social-emotional SEL data, some were looking at attendance and things like that, so we, we went through a wide variety of data sources, we really looked deeply for trends and patterns, and what does the data show us, student grades and report cards, we looked across all levels of data. And we went through a root cause analysis process and protocol to really help narrow down what we felt were some of the issues that we were really faced with, and tried to narrow down what those issues were, so that we could use those to help us set priorities for decision-making moving forward. So at the end of that session, we set some priorities that we'll talk about in just a minute, and then the third day, we really looked at how to meet the needs of all of our students based on the priorities that we set and what our data showed us. We really wanted to look at equity in scheduling, we recognized that we had some pretty significant areas of inequity in what our schedule afforded students, and we wanted to address those. We wanted to ensure that students would have some voice and choice in their schedules throughout their time at the middle school, and we wanted to maintain the teaming element, which we felt was really critical, to have that model in a middle school setting. And we looked at, we had a sandbox that had probably 50 different potential schedule options that we could look at, and we investigated those and went through all different scenarios. We plugged in our school's start and end time on all of these, and, and played around with how to, how to make it all fit, so. We all learned, had a new sense of compassion for Dr. Quirk and the work she does, and all of a sudden at the end, everyone's like, wow, you do this every year to come up with how to fit all this together, so it was a good experience for everybody. And I would say that the participants in the group felt, it's interesting, during the data dive day, many came in and were really worried, like, oh, this is, I am not a numbers person, this is not, but they were, I think overall, it was such positive feedback from the people in the group, that it was just such a great way to withhold inferences and judgment about the why, and really just look at the data, what is it telling us, regardless of all other implications, like what does it say, and start there, and that protocol, I think, was really helpful. Thank you. If you could advance. So you can see here, as I mentioned, we talked about for that day one, the collective beliefs, and then they, the team worked collaboratively together to develop a purpose statement, so because I've already spoken a bit about it, I'm not going to go through all of that, but you can take a, a quick look at what we've included here. The collective beliefs really, that, that everyone has strengths in areas of growth, that relationships are important, we want to have high expectations and safe and supportive environment, collaboration is essential, and all students will learn with the support of the learning community. If you could flip to the next slide. So day two, the data dive and root cause analysis exercise we walked through, so some of the themes that emerged, we realized that tier-one instruction in ELA may not be meeting the needs of all of the students based on the data we were seeing. This was all coming in right at the same time that we had received MCAS scores across the district, and we saw a decline in ELA. I will also mention that all of this data we looked at, you know, we had the added layer of coming off of a pandemic, or impact of assessment on a pandemic, that we're adding into all of the work we were looking at, at the data. So we tried as much as we could to look at historical data prior to the pandemic as well, and what we did see was that ELA has gradually, scores have gradually been decreasing based on MCAS data and our own internal data as well. So that was definitely an area that showed up as a need, looking at MCAS iReady, and then rising student data from grade five. We also recognized that there were opportunity gaps created by students having to be pulled from the Unified Arts for intervention. There wasn't a dedicated time in our schedule for students to receive support that they needed, so they would be missing some of these Unified Arts or elective classes. We, we looked at our grades on report cards and not necessarily matching that of standardized assessments. We noted that the eighth grade had the highest absence rate over multiple years, that was data that we were seeing as a continuous trend, and the eighth grade also had the lowest sense of belonging in our panorama data, so that was something that we wanted to make sure we were attending to and addressing as we think about our schedule and the work we do. And we did note through this work that meeting structures are in place, but we may not be utilizing them as effectively as we could, so our, our PLCs are inconsistent, team time tends to be reactive more than well-planned, and communication isn't always consistent with the way our structures are from team members to other team members who may not be able to be a part of those conversations. So based on the data we looked at, those were some of the themes that emerged. And you want to take it from here?
So there were four schedule, priorities that really came up after we boiled down everything from those three days. The first is a clear time in the day where students can get help that doesn't interrupt or take away from other classes. One of the, you know, both formative assessments and, and also, you know, surveys that we've done, the myths of, the last year-directed study, as much as it was our first go at it, that has been something that's, has been mentioned repeatedly, you know, that we liked that they had, they had that time during the day to meet with teachers and concentrate on some work during that time. Last year, the year before, it was, it was due to the need of an additional lunch period that I needed to add it. It was something I had experienced at a previous district too, so I was happy that we were able to try it. We did try, then have it this year for just one time, but it has been something that has come up that, the need for it more consistently throughout the schedule. MJ?
I just think it takes back to the, our middle school rep, how the homework club has grown exponentially in numbers than before, which is great that they're thriving, and that there's another access to the, the social piece, but I think that probably is, you know, and I'm glad to see students utilizing that club for work and socialization and collaboration, but I think, I think the, it's, to me, I, it's, it's so evident that that's, you know, that's, and that being consisted.
Right. I mean, in the, in years past, you know, a lot of teachers would offer time during lunch, and as much as that was great, that I liked that that was happening, that they were offering it, in all honesty, I feel that lunch should be a break for everybody. And, you know, when we were having it where it was every day, there was, there wasn't that need for kids were in lunch, as best as lunch could have been at that year, right? But it was still, they, they need to be social, right? I mean, that's, they're, they're kids, so, and that's part of what school is, so as much as it is to learn too. But, so that was a clear thing that came out from the data, okay? Time in the schedule for increased and consistent advisory, you know, this is our first year with tackling advisory, I think, you know, you've seen other presentations, I think it's, I couldn't ask for it to go any better, you know, it's, it's already beyond what I had hoped for with our first go. The, when the people on that team, when, when they talk about it, they know that when I try to think of something that we want to implement on a larger scale, that it's a, you know, it's not a one-year, and we're going to be looking at it for three years, and trying to change things to, and we're already trying to, doing surveys with staff to make sure that we're tackling their needs, but changing it as we go, so, you know, having a clear time for advisory where all teachers would be available with all students. The third point there is Christine had mentioned, the additional time allocated to ELA slash reading instruction. As a former math teacher, I was saying, well, we need to tackle math too, but it was that ELA and reading was more of a need, in all honesty, according to the data, but making sure that, you know, we were approaching that, and that, that's something that we should look at consistently, you know, that, that might be what it looks like now, but, you know, there might be changes in the future too. And intention, well-designed, frequent meeting time, the schedule currently allows for certain groups to have that, right? Like our teams, like when you think of like Challenger seven, or Explorer eight, right? But when you think of like our reading department, and our UAs, and our special education, you know, and other groups, they don't have that, you know, because their time off is different than because there might be multiple grades. When, when a teacher spans across multiple grades, it starts getting a little tricky with having a consistent meeting time for, not only for them to meet with teams and get information, but also to meet with their own department, because their, their times off might be different. So that will be something that we're working on too, to have that as consistent as possible, or at least, you know, trying to have more of it with those groups. Yes?
Should I, Dave, should I wait to the end of the presentation, because I don't want to delay?
Let's wait until the end of the presentation, and then try to hold questions until then.
So, I'll start with this slide, and then I know Glenn's going to pick up too. Historically, we've always had, you know, the three teams across each grade level, which form a teaching team consisting of the four core subjects of math, science, social days, and English, the hardcore four, as I call them. You know, although, and, and that is something that we're committed to keeping, although the concept of, of a three-person team does exist in some, you know, where like, for example, so, a teacher that might be dual-certified in math and science might teach sections of both subjects, at this time, we just felt that we, with the staff that we have, and with the teaming model that we have, that we wanted to keep that as consistent as possible as, as to what we have now.
Thanks, Dr. Quirk. So I'm going to tackle the next couple of slides here, excuse me, so, you know, the, the essence of a middle school, I think, continues to really center around teaming, and, and the research would actually absolutely speak to this, and it's more than just the association for middle-level education, but if, if, if one was to take a look at the research in the field of that, there absolutely continues to be a belief that teaming, as we know it, whether, sometimes it's called clusters, or, or grade-level teams, but it, it continues to serve as a real powerful influence on best-supporting young adolescents. This age is so pivotal, it's so critical, and the need to really create smaller groups within what is often larger schools is so important, and arguably even more important at this level than, say, a high school, which is why you tend to see the difference or the variations. I don't doubt that there may be some junior-high models that are organized and are running or operating out there, but I would hazard to guess that if we were to scan the sort of landscape of middle schools, we would absolutely find, generally speaking, that the teaming approach is how they're structured and how they're operated, and, and I think, and we think, that this continues to be the direction that we should pursue. There's no question that teaming comes with some challenges in terms of staffing and how to structure that, but we believe that this, this would represent the best direction to continue here. Next slide, please. You know, some of the, some of the highlights that really center around what teaming provides in terms of benefits, and there's, there's a lot here, I won't go through them all in the interest of time, but, you know, you're creating these smaller groups of teachers and staff members who know these students the best, and who can work collectively and collaboratively to support their needs. And, and if done right, and if approached right, this is really how this model can maximize instruction and support for, for students, not just instructionally, but also socially and emotionally too. It is about student learning, of course, first and foremost, but it's also about building relationships within between the team of teachers who work regularly with these students each and every day. There are other opportunities that can expand to thinking about integrating curriculum, and sharing those approaches that seem to be best for that group of students at that particular time of the year. So there's a lot that I think, and we think undergirds, this as a commitment to moving forward. So what does that moving forward look like? Next slide, please, Jeanette. So the, the structure as part of this schedule, obviously there are changes that, that Jeanette will highlight in just a moment, but organizationally, the plan for the middle school moving into next year, on one level, looks very much like it is today. The plan is to continue to operate or organize, I'm sorry, around three teaching teams for each grade level, that is what currently is in place right now. Each team will consist of four core subject teachers, the, what'd you call it, the core four?
Core four.
Four, as well as the continuation of special education support, with a special education teacher that will be attached to each team to support inclusion. Each core subject, as you'll see in a moment, will, will meet daily, so that is to say that a student, whatever team you're on, will have math, science, and so on, each and every day as part of the instruction. You can find variations of that in different schedules, if you were to look from one school to another, there's different scheduling approaches, but after consideration of sort of what we had before us, we, we felt like this made the most sense at this point in time. And I want to point out two final things here around projections, because part of our work, obviously, is coming up with the best sort of laid plan about how to approach this, but then equally so, how do we shape the staffing, and the staffing requirement around that? This plan right now does align with, with slightly lower-than-contractual requirements at the middle school level. This, this group, this committee knows very well that we, we painstakingly look at what those projections are looking like, and then make, try, try to make adjustments accordingly from a staffing standpoint. To completely, be completely transparent, we know that this model, this plan, does include lower-than-contractual requirements. However, we're trying to balance that with the belief of what is not only recovery, but also a need here to try and improve student learning, to really move the mark and provide the opportunity for our, our teachers at the middle school to continue their, their work in, in, in moving forward the school. That all being said, we're obviously in a need to continually track projections, and we will continue to do so. If there is a swing one way or the other that, that happens down the line, it may be that we have to make adjustments to that. The challenge with doing so though, I'll, I'll say this is a, and put on my middle school principal hat for a moment, is that sometimes you do get those bubbles, I'll call it, that comes through, a larger cohort or class size, and certainly, it may be the case that you can expand or contract to align with those, that student, the bubble, if you will. But the challenge is, if you are, if you are not retaining staff, and adding a team, eliminating a team, adding a team, swinging back and forth, organizationally, that can be a problem. That can be a problem for staff morale, it can be a problem for a whole host of things. So we're putting stakes in the ground around what we think is the best approach right now. That's not to say that over the long term, it may always look the same with three teaching teams per grade level. I think you're up next with the schedule.
So, some thoughts that will be brought up again, that Glenn and Christine had mentioned earlier, but with the new proposed schedule that I'm working on, that will have the three teaching teams consistent, like we do currently now for each grade. As it's mentioned, that it'll be the four core subjects, and the one special education inclusion teacher. I'm proud to say that we now have an inclusion teacher on each and every team, which was a recommendation from the Walker Report from a couple of years ago. Each core subject will meet once daily, meaning that they'll always have math, science, social days, and English every day. Advisory will meet once in the six-day cycle, we're, we're keeping it on a six-day cycle, for hopefully a longer block, we're still, I'm still trying to work that out. Win, which stands for what I need, would then happen, it will happen every day, it will happen the six days of the week, due to It will happen the six days of the week due to services too, because we're, it's on a six-day cycle. So we'll have an intervention block every day, which will provide opportunity for students to not, you know, students that might need interventions, as well as students that will also, some of their IEP services will be able to happen during that time. That is one of the biggest issues with the current schedule that I haven't liked since I've been there, in all honesty. That students, that the more services that they have, the less of the fun classes in the, in the UA or exploratory, whatever you want to call it, sections, happen. So by having this block and having as many, you know, it's, it's not going to be a block where all ser-, it's not going to fix 100%, but it will drastically reduce that those students will have more opportunities to take an art class, to take, you know. We always try to make sure that they're in the performing arts, if that's what they like. But, you know, tech ed and computer literacy and, and who knows, you know. But for that's for right now, that's what we have. But it'll have that opportunity. Reading support will happen during that WIN block and also will allow those teachers to also help more in the classes, more specifically ELA. Maths, we have a math support class that will happen during that block. Like I had mentioned, the IEP services, as much as possible, will be delivered during that block. And, you know, it would allow for students to gain time during the day where things could be retort to them, or if they have the ability that they can move further on a math problem to the next level, or, you know, or things of that nature. But it's still, they would still always have their class time during every, every day, but this would allow for that flexibility there. And teams would work together to determine which student gets to see which teacher during that time. We will have a committee later on in the year to help work out and, 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 not schedule, but to program that.
Can I add to that a little bit too?
Yes, please.
So the WIN block typically, just for clarification point, is part of a multi-tiered system of support. I think it's a very helpful, useful structure to be able to provide those interventions in a way that is equitable so that students aren't missing new content or, you know, Unified Arts in order to receive support. So I've seen it work in districts where, at the beginning of the month, for example, the grade-level team meets to really look at the student needs at that juncture, at that point in time. What are the needs of all of our students? Students who are, are going out during the WIN block to receive support from a math interventionist or reading interventionist or a special education teacher have that plan in place. But for those students who don't have that plan, they still have needs that need to be met. So hence the, the WIN, W-I-N, What I Need. That team really looks at that group of students who is not currently scheduled to be out at that point in time and says, okay, well, what is it that that group needs at this point? And there may be a group of students who, even though, you know, they're not identified through the data as needing the most intense reading intervention or math intervention, they may need, maybe they didn't do as well on that last unit, on that particular topic, and having a reteach opportunity on that math concept. So a teacher might say, I'll take this group of six students, you're taking this group. So they make a plan collectively as a team about how to best meet the needs of the students who, at that point in time. And that's fluid and changes. The kids, the students that are identified from month to month are, could be fluid and changing as well too, because we'll be able to, the, the best part of this whole model is that it creates the option for us to make fluid decisions about what students need when they need it. Not, well, at the end of the semester, we can consider trying to get them into another class. We can look at data on an ongoing basis throughout the course of the year and make decisions about a student needing a some extra reading support at this point in time. And that doesn't lock them in for the remainder of the year for reading support. We may run an eight-week cycle to provide some targeted intervention that maybe addresses the one deficit that they have, allows them to get back into the mainstream and not need that extra support. So it creates that option for flexibility and fluidity to meet student needs.
In our current schedule, that is also one thing, since I've been there, that has been hard to get away from with our current schedule, is the locking in, right? We, we do, we do have some interventions, but it would be that they were in, for example, math lab for an entire semester, right? And there wasn't flexibility if they didn't need it anymore before the end of the semester, or reading for the entire year. Having this block in the way that we're hoping that it will be, you know, scheduled and programmed would allow us to, to be more fluid and address immediate needs for students and be able to consistently change for what they need. So this is just the benefit of the new, I will talk about the benefits of the new WMS schedule. For the most part, it, it, it does look similar to what we currently have in that the number of transitions potentially with the number of blocks. But if you see there, there, one of the blocks is, is WIN now, right? Currently, a core teacher of math, you know, would have five sections. They will have four and then they'll have that WIN block, okay? So it does provide for slightly longer core instruction periods, resulting in additional time slightly. Designated daily intervention, as we've talked about every day. Again, students on IEPs will have that greater access to Unified Arts and experience all of what the middle school can offer. Reading and math strategies can be moved out of the UA block and into that WIN block. As Christine had, had put, would be able to allow us for more fluid, fluidity with giving them the access of what they need. World Language, which is currently one of the, it happens during one of the core times, will be added. That will be a shift, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in the next slide, where it would be in the UA wheel. But again, I, I'm hope, I'm excited for this because I think our World Language program is, the teachers are fantastic, and I'm, I'm hoping that more students will be able to access them than ever before too. So I'm pretty excited for that.
Students currently receiving reading support are typically unable to access a World Language right now. So it becomes a-
And in our sub-separate programs.
Yes, other programs as well. So it's an equity issue that really needs to be, that we feel really needs to be addressed. And this is a way in order to make sure that students have access.
So implications of the new schedule, as I had just mentioned, right? The World Language will shift from the, if, the way, when we talk about the schedule at school, there's the core wheel and then there's the UA wheel. So that shift from a core wheel to the UA wheel in that they won't be meeting every day. However, we would be starting them more in gaining access to, to the language of their choice in sixth grade, which currently, right now, they experience an exploratory period of one quarter. They would have it every other day for the full year in sixth grade. So, you know, it does offset some of the loss of curriculum time, but it also gives all of the students more access to it. As it says there on the next bullet. Reduces, for Unified Arts, it does reduce the total number of sections of UA classes due to the addition of the intervention block and the shift of World Language. You know, additionally, currently, right now as well, the other shift, which is what I'm working on for more details, right? Is that with some of the services being pulled out, there'll be more students that would be able to access some of the UA classes. So, but overall, in doing some number crunches, right now, the total number of sections would be, would, we wouldn't need as many as we currently have. And that with the implication for staffing, the current plan is built upon prioritizing for students maintaining lower than required student-teacher ratio as, as much as possible, that we would want that ratio, but the schedule will have fewer UA. It's not necessarily, don't think of it as that we're losing a type of class, but that there'll just be less sections, if that makes sense, that it's not offered as many times throughout the day because we don't have as many students that need the classes, because there's more classes to choose from.
Thanks for that clarification.
Okay, so it's not that any particular subject is being reduced in that, or eliminated. I don't want to use that word. It's just I need less sections of each type of subject. Okay? Next slide.
Yeah, just a couple more slides. Thanks for your patience as we work through this. Next steps, by the end of February, there's still work that has to unfold in terms of finalizing what those, the UA course offerings look like. You know, every action has a reaction, of course, and this is, it's no small thing to change a schedule. And there are aspects of this that are not reflective of changes. There are others that certainly are. So there's certainly still more, more work to come. It's the anticipation that by the end of March, April, we'll have an update to the new program of studies to you. I mean, there, there will be changes in some way, shape, or form. You've heard about the Unified Arts for sure. It may not be the elimination of programs, it may be the total timeline on learning as we try and make adjustments as a result of these scheduling changes. The winter-spring will be the target of time for, that we need to identify what the staffing impacts are. And then certainly a big focus is on that WIN intervention block and making sure that we are positioning ourselves with our staffing with an approach that will maximize what we believe fully that this can provide. And then the final slide, I think, just for this committee, for our staff, for our community at large. I firmly believe this. I think that, I understand that it doesn't always play out this way, but that we should not look at a schedule that is a permanent entity or structure of a school. That's not to say that you embark upon massive changes or overhauls every year. You can't, and that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be prudent. But it's not to say, nor should this be looked at, that this is the middle school schedule that will be in place for the next decade. I, I think that would be short-sighted and, and it certainly doesn't point to our need collectively as educators to be monitoring this and to be assessing what the impacts are and to be identifying possible changes, tweaks, or adjustments as we go forward. So I think that that's just an important piece to leave here. And it's a lot of information. Thank you for your patience as we work through this. Obviously, though, this is a very large, you know, a very large endeavor, the coming out of that middle school program of studies. Happy to take questions. Jeanette?
So a few things. First, I, I do really appreciate the teaming approach and it seems extremely logical. The, the concept of WIN is fantastic. Clearly, there's a need that we need to meet. And, and expanding foreign language to sixth grade is a, is a great idea. I'm a huge proponent of foreign language learning. I think it's critical for, for just the general growth of students and their knowledge. I am concerned about WIN in that it's, for the students that need the support, it's great, but I'm worried about equity in that if you're reteaching or giving extensions to, to some students while other students are receiving services, they're not getting the reteaching or extensions. And so either they're not getting the, the, the relearning part of the reteaching or they're falling further behind on the extension side. So in one way or another, they are not benefiting from what some kids will get during that time. Or alternatively, if you say, well, we can't reteach, we can't extend because we don't want them to fall further behind, then there are some students who don't have a lot to do during that block. And so I'm, I'm very concerned about that side of it. And I'm sure you guys have thought through a lot about that, but it seems like, one way or the other, it's, it's, you can't really flip the coin and land, have them land on the edge too many times. And then the other piece, the foreign language going to sixth grade is good, but net-net, it means 100 less hours of foreign language while they're at the school, in the, in the three years they're at the school. So it is a reduction in foreign language, total learning, which is unfortunate. As I said, I, I'm a big proponent of it. So I understand that we have the need and it's, it is the price we have to pay to meet that need, but it's, it's really unfortunate and ideally, we find a way to recover that in the next time we review the schedule if we swit this approach. So, thank you. I appreciate all the effort that went into this though, for sure.
So I'm happy to try and answer your question or address that. The, it, it is definitely, it takes careful planning in order to develop that WIN block to really be well-implemented. And so it is not something that is easy. I've been in schools where teachers just say, oh, well, we'll just do something fun. And that, that's not the intent because the intent is to create an equitable opportunity for students to receive supplemental instruction through the WIN block that is not supplanting their core instruction, which is what happens oftentimes. So it's really about the, the content that is being delivered during that time is not necessarily, it, it's definitely not new content or new curriculum. It's, you know, a student who may not qualify because we don't have enough spots for intervention. At the elementary grade, you know, we sort of have our own little internal color-coding system of a, a pink student goes with the reading specialist and a yellow student, they just need a little extra help. We have that model currently happening now in our elementary schools and the classroom teacher is providing that extra support for that student. And that changes every time we have a meeting, we have a different conversation around who those kids are that need that little extra boost at that point in time. So it's, it's, that's the type of extra support that they're getting. It's really about what their need is at that point in time. Whereas if, if a student is really identified to need more intervention, more globally, or for reading or math, then they, based on the data, on our data meetings, then they would be identified to be receiving it from the reading or math person. So it definitely will be, no doubt, a work in progress with the teams to really look at what those needs are and to always be self-reflective of, of the decisions that are made to ensure that we are creating, not creating inequities in our attempt to make it more equitable, right? So it's going to always be that balance. And the World Language piece, you know, I met, so Carlos, Mr. Brown, was a member of our committee that worked on this with us. So he was a part of that, our, our World Language CTO. So we had a lot of conversations about this and he worked through all of this data with us as well. One of the, you know, decisions about adding the sixth grade as instruction as opposed to more of the exploratory is to make up some of that lost ground. But we also do know that we will need to really look at where our students end up at the end of a three-year experience now. And, and if that means that we need to make adjustments as they're entering the high school and looking at, you know, are there any gaps between their proficiency levels when they leave middle school now and what the expectations are at their freshman year, then we need to make those adjustments as well. But, so those are conversations that we're already having.
So I'll ask just a couple and then give the floor, because I've got several questions. So a couple of clar, more clarifying questions and themes. So are we, are we doing away with PLCs now in using teams? Or is this just the new vernacular, vernacular? I mean, I know that you were saying that the, the PLCs were inconsistent because of scheduling constraints and communication issues, but, you know, I mean, it's, and forgive me, I may not just be up on the evolution of education in, in four years, but I know that, that collaboration of professionals together in problem-solving, it was a big proponent and a very positive drive forward. And granted, it's only as successful as one can do consistently. So I just, I guess looking for some clarification on that piece.
I would say that the words are synonymous.
Okay.
Okay. And that we're just looking for it to be more consistent and more productive.
Excellent. I, I was also curious and peeked on some of the data that you uncovered with regards to absenteeism as, with eighth grades. Was there any particular themes that may have contributed to this rise in eighth-grade absenteeism over several years? I mean, was there, I didn't know if there was a consistent theme that may have come out of it, but that may, I think, maybe.
We didn't, but if, I, I mean, I can go back and look at it more if you'd like me to analyze it more. I mean, it was just that, I believe that eighth grade was the highest across, you know. Eighth grade does have a lot of other things that happen in, as far as when they, you know, when they go to look for different schools and, and things of that nature does contribute. You know, it was also hard with attendance just because of the last couple of years with, you know, virtually present and present and things of that nature. But attendance is something that I look at every day. So if you have more specific questions about attendance, I, I can get that for you.
I, I, I think I was, not to, I don't want to delve too much and take your time off because there's a lot of work that you're involved in. But I think, I'd just be curious if you uncover some general themes, some, one of which you may have, that you touched upon. And just to, I, the other thing is, like, I've got several. This will be my last question before I see the floor. Where does Jim fall into this? Isn't-
Physical education?
Yes. Isn't phys, sorry.
I get, I get schooled.
My 80s vernacular.
I get schooled every time, too, so.
Physical education, I know better. My sister's a physical ed instructor, a teacher. How does that play into it? Is isn't that part a requirement, a healthy requirement?
So to my understanding, there technically isn't a requirement with the state as far as, like, how much we offer for physical education. We should offer it. We have to offer it.
For all students.
To all students. But whether it happens once in a cycle, twice in a cycle, three times in a cycle, there aren't state guidelines as far as that goes. Physical education, because gym is the location, that's what they always say to me, right? Will still be offered and falls in the UA wheel.
Okay.
What that specifically will look like, if there will be changes, we haven't determined that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Mrs. Plowman?
Um, thank you. Just a couple of quick things. Will the groupings be the same for advisory for the next? Do the kids stay together, or does that change?
So that is a great question. That is something that we're looking to tackle and figure out what we feel will be with the staff and with the students, too. It is a model that we could do, right? Currently, for the, where this is the first year, it was their current core teachers, but it could be that they stay with them for the three years that they're here at the middle school. We have not made that decision. But would be looking into all the stakeholders to find out what we wanted, at least try for next year and see what we can do.
I'm really happy about the schedule changes, the implementation of WIN for recovery and repetition and equity reasons. Can this time also be used for new material for students who may need more of a challenge? So we talk a lot about helping the students that are, you know, there are sort of gaps and they're sort of needing to, sort of needing a boost. But I know that our community has also had conversations about kids who are maybe needing to be a little more challenged. And I forget what the term is for that, but is there opportunity for that here, too?
I think that's a common model. So within that WIN block, it's common, when you think about, you know, some districts who may have different programs for students to go to, could participate. But I think what a lot of teams do is, if you have students who are, you know, excelling in math, they may, you know, we may be talking about a particular concept or unit in math, but a teacher during that WIN time may be really extending that learning for those particular students beyond what is required in their textbook or what might be that, for that point in time. So it would be taking those concepts and just bringing them to a higher level for them. So it is an opportunity, definitely, because it's for what they need, right? It's what I need for everybody. So it's really looking at, we have, you know, I-ready data. We have all of this data around, and IXL data in math for how our students are performing. So, you know, I think the natural, particularly coming off a pandemic, is, oh, let's make sure we're backfilling skills that kids have missed. But also, we really need to be meeting students where they are and extending them beyond. So it's an opportunity to do that as well.
I'm actually quite looking forward to that. I mean, right now, currently, and again, for a math teacher, really, the only advanced class that we have is math, right? And, you know, would love to see that in other classes, other subjects. So that's, to me, what extension means when that word is used throughout the presentation. So, you know, and the team would identify both those students that need an intervention or could handle an extension.
And I should point out that that allows for, having the fluidity allows for flexibility. A student might need intervention in one subject, but also might need extension in another. And having them locked into a schedule for an entire semester doesn't allow that flexibility where they may go and get intervention for six or eight weeks in reading, but then they're excelling in math and they're participating in an extension group there. So it creates more opportunity for kids to really experience, to get what they need.
And lastly, do less sections of UA equal larger classes?
No, because you have to imagine that there's more, you know, with world language going into that wheel, there's a lot of sections of that subject added, right? So not necessarily. You know, there, we do hold tight. When I first got to Wilmington Middle School, there were some things that, like, gym classes were over, you know, the contractual number, just, and for safety reasons, we maintain, you know. So there, you know, we would always keep it at that level, you know, and there are some classes inherently because of, you know, with band, for example, that is well over. It's accepted, right? That we, because the band, we work people to play the, the instruments that we can and sing, you know. But I, I mean, they'll go up potentially a little bit. I haven't done those numbers yet. But there are a lot of added classes that are going to be there, so it looks like it'll balance pretty well.
So great to see all of the, the sort of outcomes of AMLE's consultation and all of the, you know, the data, and to really see this come to fruition and implementation is just really exciting and a testament to your hard work, Dr. Quirk, and your team, so, and Ms. Elliott and everybody. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for this work. I guess, might as well just store some comments. Some of the things that I really liked seeing from this, sort of, I pull away as themes, is the themes of, like, equity and opportunity and both of those things increasing with the schedule. And I think that's a really important takeaway from all this. I think that not pulling kids from UA is huge. And I know that there is perhaps a drop in the number of hours of world language being taught, but increased number of students given access to world language, I think, is incredibly important. My, I think that the ideas of fluidity, the WIN block, the WIN block is something I've never even heard of before or considered. And I really, I think there's a lot of potential there. Just quickly going back to the world language, one thing that could consider as a district is including some sort of exploratory at a younger grade, fifth grade, or including world language in, you know, you're never too young to learn a language. So I think there's other opportunities we could explore. So thank you for this. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. I was just going to touch upon that. Thank you for stealing my thunder today. Happy to give it to you.
Anytime, anytime.
But I do think, especially at that level, that having an introduction to world languages, whether it be at the fifth grade or even taking a part of the sixth grade, maybe fall semester, to open up to the variety of languages, Spanish. I don't, I'm sorry, French, Spanish.
French, Spanish, and Italian.
Because I keep getting confused with what we were offered back 100 years ago. I think languages, and I've heard that kids who have gone into a specific language, sometimes it just doesn't, yes, there are romance languages, but some languages just don't click, or others, they'll switch midterm. And I think that's really kind of important, too. In order for them to be successful with the new structure of world languages for looking at a three-year span. But I think it really is important just to give them a taste of what these languages are so they can make a better form decision in what they choose for the next several years and such. And so, yeah, so, so that was, since everyone else took my, we're all great minds here.
Can I speak to that quickly?
Yeah.
Yeah. I've had conversations with Mr. Brown about what that means and what, so they're, he and his department are brainstorming opportunities of how can we, you know, can we bring something down to the fifth grade, the spring of fifth grade? Can we do some type of exploratory operation? Could we have students come down and speak to them and present and do? So we're thinking creatively about all kinds of options that might be available to help expose students to the language more, you know, in fifth grade so that they can make that informed decision.
When do they make those choices? At the end of the fifth grade year?
It would be, we haven't done it that way.
Typically, now, it's currently at the sixth grade, at the end of the sixth grade.
Okay.
And then they would choose, and that would be their language for seventh and eighth.
But you make that determination before the, before that school year ends, correct?
Correct. So it would be that the spring we would.
I wonder if there were some sort of web-based exploration, you know what I mean, that?
Please know that all of these things are things that we're thinking of and how we can promote it. You know, our biggest, which I'm really excited about, is just to reach more students and provide the opportunity for a lot of students that didn't, you know, there are a number of students that don't have world language at all.
I'm not challenging that. I just didn't know how to make that bridge.
Might be more expanding on that, but that's our first hurdle. And then, you know, how that looks with fifth grade potentially, or how we promote it in that, you know, like I said, with the fifth grade, with exploratory, all are things that we've briefly talked about, but more focusing on the, on the, just providing it to more students.
Okay.
Right, for the first year at a level of attack.
Okay, no worries. One step at a time. I had a quick question. Was there a particular reason why the UA classes were at the end of the school day as opposed to maybe a little?
In schedule?
Yeah. I'm just asking.
Oh, sorry. That was just a model. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. But currently, right now, they happen at different, so there's one morning and then there's one afternoon.
Okay, good, good.
That would stay. It was just to illustrate the different clock.
I appreciate that. And I very much appreciate fluidity, because I think it's an evolution of education and teaching and learning. I do, however, you know me, I'm a gal who needs to know what the expectation is of which to move within. So I think system structure to some capacity needs to be foundational to allow that fluidity to happen within it. And that's just speaking to that, to that point, that little bit of structure, isn't that for anybody? And I think expectation is going to be a huge, it'll be able to set more expectations that you can actually reach while you ebb and flow, because isn't that what we have in our classrooms, diverse learners that all learn and succeed at different paces and absorb differently? And that was kind of really the drive with regards to if UA classes were going to be, because kids learn and access curriculum through alternative methods that just form and support the broader, the broader piece that we're trying for them to gain. But, and thank you very much for answering my questions.
Thank you. I'd like to move us forward now, but thank you, Dr. Quirk. This was a thoughtful process that I think has resulted in a thoughtful recommendation. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We now turn an hour and 24 minutes into the meeting to our consent agenda, as we usually do.
Mr. Tracy.
Timestamps have been left in the dust. They never stood, they never stood a chance. Approval of items by consensus. We start with the approval of minutes from December 21st, 2022. We have a motion. Mr. Turner, the second, Mrs. Plowman, all in favor. And that is four, and four in favor with one abstention, Mrs. Burns. Next is WHS banned ski field trip to Henneker, New Hampshire, and Mr. Farrar has patiently waited.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Please come forward.
I failed to, to send this document ahead of time to project, but I do have hard copies I can pass around. Just roughly goes through the proposed itinerary and some of the costs of the trip. Yeah, that plus some. I added more to this.
They have the other stuff.
Yeah, they have the basic of it. They have the top and the bottom, basically. They don't have the middle. So first off, I'll just kind of briefly explain. Well, I should introduce myself. My name is Mr. Farrar. I teach band here in Wilmington, sixth grade through 12th grade. And this trip was an idea that I cannot take full credit for the originality of it. Back when I was actually a student in Wilmington, this trip would run on a semi-annual basis. I don't think it was every year. And it stopped maybe five years or so, six years ago, before COVID, and hasn't really resumed. And now, I think, with things kind of passed us, it would be a great time to do so. So the trip proposed date would be the Friday, March 17th, and we would come back the 18th. So it was just an overnight trip. We'd go up to Bow, New Hampshire, stay at the Hampton Inn there, which is only about a 30, 20-minute ride from the mountain. Ski all day Saturday, or snowboard, and then come back and back at the high school by right around dinner time on Saturday. So it's about a 24-hour trip when all is said and done. The cost of the trip, right now, it's very undetermined. You can see, I put together basically ranges of lows to highs that the cost is going to ultimately depend on, first, what the student needs for their time on the mountain, whether they need just a lift ticket, a lift ticket and rental, a lift ticket, rental, and lesson. Students who have never skied or snowboarded before would be required to take a lesson. And from memory, and the woman at Pat's Peak did reassure me that they still function this way, it's a one-hour group lesson, so you get to take it with students that you sign up for that lesson time with. And generally, within that hour, you're able to ski most of the mountain afterwards, kind of with your friends, and you're released kind of from that lesson. That is one of the reasons that we went with Pat's Peak. It's a pretty accessible mountain for beginners. But again, like you can see, the prices, well, first off, they vary from when you're 18-plus versus under 18. But then they range from $60 with just a lift ticket all the way up to 130 if you need everything. So that's one part and one variable in terms of the cost. And then the second is the bus and the hotel. Our Band Parents and Friends organization has graciously offered to sponsor a bus. So if we need one bus, then that means the cost of the transportation will be 100% covered. If we do need a second bus, then that, well, we're going to cover the second bus. And with only 67 students in the band and the bus holding 56, it puts us at a deficit, of course, if we need one bus just for a handful of kids. But that's part of the reason why Band Parents has offered to cover one of the buses. So depending on how many students attend, that'll either be $70 on the lower end if we only go with one bus, or up to $95 for two buses if we do need the second coach. And then in bold there, under the bus and hotel, it says what the total cost of the trip would be for students renting equipment, hotel, and bus. The upper end being 225 if you need absolutely everything, rental, hotel, bus, and the lower end being 130 for everything. So there is a bit of a range. And then chaperones, of course. I will be looking for apparent chaperones in addition to some staff chaperones that have reached out to me, offering their time. The trip would be paid for, and Pat's Peak does offer lift tickets for chaperones. I think they offer one for every 10 students attending. And their job would basically just be check-ins on the mountain every so often. Have all the chap, all the students assigned to that chaperone meetup, and so long as they're all there, they can go back out and ski. And finally, the educational objectives. While it might seem hard to draw parallels to educational objectives for a band ski trip, I have to say, a lot of them are similar to what I presented to you for the educational objectives of Band Camp. Band Camp has a whole list of educational objectives from reading music to marching on the field, to marching basics, to a whole lot. But to me, the most important one is that I, is the one that I included here in bold. It says, "To provide a memorable group experience which will promote group momentum throughout the school year." And I think that this trip will act as a little booster to that. Concert band season is very different than marching band, and marching band has now officially ended. So marching band, I compare more like a sport, more like a true team experience where you're working consistently with everybody in the band. And concert band, I, you know, attribute it more similar to your general class, where, you know, you're working, yes, still as a team, it's hard not to, as an ensemble, but it's more on an individual basis. So I think this will be a really cool experience and unique experience for students to have, you know, memorable experience outside of the school setting, similar to Band Camp.
Thank you. Questions and comments? Mr. Turner?
Sounds like a great time. Two things. One, if a student can't afford, will there be a way to?
Yes. Yeah, so Band Parents, again, it depends on how many students would end up needing financial aid. But at a minimum, they can offer up to 50% of the trip covered, likely up to 100%, depending on how many students are in need.
And then one kind of random one, is there any different insurance liability for the district for a non-athletic event, non-sports event that is an athletic event? I mean, if a kid, obviously, there's waivers and those sorts of things, but in terms of liability, if somebody gets injured skiing, do we have a different insurance risk than, because it's not part of band, skiing is not part of that activity by default? do we have a different insurance risk than, because it's not part of band, skiing is not part of that activity by default?
It's the same level of insurance, right?
It's a school sponsor event, so it would be-
Same liabilities and everything else, so no, no additional. Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Have fun.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the band ski trip. Uh, Mrs. Burns with the motion, Mr. Samaha seconded, and all in favor, and that is unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving to warrants, uh, all right, let me just do a whole, whole bunch of these in one setting. Uh, we have general 19, 20, 21, and 22 revolving 21, 22, 23, local 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, and 55, and food service 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35. Do I have a motion? Mr. Samaha and seconded by Mrs. Burns, all in favor. That is unanimous. Uh, we have circuit breaker O2 and O3, Mr. Turner with a motion, and Mr. Samaha seconds, all in favor. And that is, Mrs. Burns, are you abst, okay, so we have four with Mrs. Burns upstanding. And payroll for January 4th, 2023, and January 18th, 2023. Mrs. Plowman, motion, and Mr. Burn, sorry, Mr. Turner seconding. This is harder to look both ways than it seems.
That's a bust.
Uh, second, all in favor. This is for the payrolls. So, uh, you abstaining for?
I am. Uh, sped.
Okay, so-
Oh, payroll. Get me, my apologies. I'm sorry.
All right, so that is unanimous. And then lastly, special education, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27. So motion, Mrs. Plowman, Mr. Turner seconds, all in favor. And that is four in favor, and Mrs. Burns upstanding. All right, and that is the consent agenda. That takes us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brand?
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening again. Uh, two items tonight, nothing to accompany these in the packet. Uh, speak to both of them, starting first with the MSBA and the Wildwood School building, uh, project. So we are at a really, uh, important juncture for this project as we continue to move forward as a partner with MSBA. Um, in fact, today, a request for services, request for designer services, as it's called, um, hit the street, so to speak. So what that basically means is that, uh, with the help and support of our owner's project manager, um, uh, development of a document that ultimately, uh, has to be approved by the MSBA is out on the street. And interested, um, bidders or, or, I guess, if you will, uh, will have picked up this project, understanding better what our needs and, and respective desires are as a community, and, uh, in short order, will submit their application. On Thursday evening of this week, we have a, the next Wildwood Building, um, Wildwood Building Committee that's scheduled, and one of the, uh, one of the primary tasks that night is to, uh, approve, uh, a designer selection committee. That subcommittee will, similar to how the owner's project manager, um, owner's project management search unfolded, that search committee, um, has to be officially voted on. There will be a subset of the Wildwood Building Committee, and their task will be to review the submissions for those who are interested in serving in this role. In short, a requ, uh, the designer is, is really think about it as, I mean, similar, like an architect, but it's a, uh, it is a designer who will come very quickly to understand what our goals and objectives are as a school community. Will embark upon a feasibility study to analyze everything from what spaces in town can be used for a new building or renovated building, um, and specifically, our quest on exploring school consolidation. Will be very quickly front and center for whoever is going to be the designer, and they will help our community and our school district explore all of this. Uh, looking at the request for services, I would anticipate, based upon the timeline, by the end of April, I think it is, that all of the process from today that started until contract, um, uh, finalization and such will be the end of April. So a lot of activity, a little bit of a, a quieter time period in some respects for this project, um, but this is, again, a pretty pivotal, uh, piece that's upcoming, um, uh, starting today. So I'll pause there if there are any questions, but just to keep this committee and the community up to date with the MSBA project. Uh, okay, um, school start times, uh, item B, 8B is the next. Um, thank you to many members of this committee who, and Mr. Ragsdale, who served as, as really, um, uh, the, the, what would we call you? The coordinator today?
Moderator?
Moderator, uh, for our community forum, for our school start times, as we continue to seek to gather the input um, and feedback from our stakeholders. Uh, we had, I think it was approximately 100, give or take, members of the community who, uh, who, who joined, 110, uh, this evening. We are, uh, offering a staff forum virtually tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon. There continues and will continue to be the opportunity for members of our community to rely this committee with feedback. Uh, we will again, I think, approach it the same way in advance of next week's meeting, the school committee.
The Google form, they should have announced it today at the end of the forum. I reopened it, so anyone that attended today's forum or fed additional comments, they could actually post those, and those will be shared with the school community for next Wednesday's meeting. That Google form will reopen until Tuesday morning at 8:00 AM.
Perfect. Um, so, uh, that's really all I had on that, but I'm not sure if, if members of the committee have any questions.
Mrs. Plowman?
Um, the forum with the staff tomorrow, is that something school committee would be, would have access to, just to hear their feedback and-
Yes, certainly. Yes, and I, and I, um, I should have said that the, uh, the session today has been recorded, was recorded, and we will distribute that recording, um, like we have done for other meetings in the past. Um, and I would envision doing the same thing, I think, for the staff certainly as well, too.
Yes, I will be attending that meeting.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Next, we have public comment. Uh, we have two people signed up to, to public comment. Um, Jacqueline Fraser. Does not look like that. Uh, Sarah Quinn.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, my name is Sarah Quinn. I reside at One North Street in Wilmington. Um, last time I stood here, uh, Mr. Turner encouraged me to return and voice my concerns. Um, first, I'm a parent of a student who will be attending, um, school on the north side of town in just a few short years. Secondly, I am a kindergarten teacher at the Wildwood School. Um, as I'm sure you've heard from many, the school's start time proposal poses significant conflicts for families and caregivers as well as teachers. In the 10 years I've taught in this district, I've learned how data drives important decisions. Here, I'd like to share with you some data collected regarding school start times for kindergarten in districts that are geographically closest to Wilmington. Um, the list that I'm about to share with you, um, all of these districts start between 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock. Um, and I'd just like to share a copy of this, if everyone wouldn't mind taking one. Thank you. Um, so, to continue, Burlington, Billerica, Tewksbury, Andover, North Reading, Reading, Woburn, Stonem, Wakefield, Lynnfield, Lexington, Bedford, Boxford, Middleton, Topsfield, Melrose, Winchester, and Chelmsford all start between 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock for kindergarten students. If other districts can figure out how to start between 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock, why can't we? Five-year-olds should not be waiting for the bus in the dark. Families' routines and lives should not be so drastically disrupted. With this proposal, families on the north side of town have a one-and-a-half-hour gap between school start times for Wildwood to Woburn Street to the north. I would like to ask, who is benefiting from the Wildwood starting 70 minutes earlier than the current start time? The Wildwood staff has undergone significant conflicts in the past few years. This one is the icing on the cake. The current proposal will cause major conflicts for teachers as the vast majority of our childcare centers in town don't open until 7:30. Will you allow staff with young children to drop their children off at daycare, then get to school as soon as they can? Will you accommodate for transfers for staff members to other buildings in the district whose time aligns with daycare start times in Wilmington? Will we be forced to find jobs elsewhere? Not just a few, but many Wildwood teachers are faced with this conflict that I'm sharing with you this evening. How do you plan to resolve these problems? It would be a shame to see so many valued staff members be forced to leave due to what this all comes down to, issues with transportation. I know I speak for many when I say that it is my sincerest hope that the school committee members, who will be voting, voting for or against this proposal, will be attending the forum tomorrow to hear from the many teachers who are against this proposal. Thank you.
Anything else who would like to make a public comment? All right, and that leads us to new business. First item up is student support services. So, Ms. Brand and Ms. Murray?
As they come forward, uh, there is a accompanying presentation that is in the, uh, is in the school committee, uh, packet for this evening for members of the community that might be interested in learning more about this. This, um, uh, thank you to, to both Ms. Murray and Ms. Brown and the Grand for their work on this. This is another, uh, effort for us to, um, provide, uh, insight for the school committee and the community uh, around some of the many challenges that we continue to face as a school community. Recently, you heard, of course, Ms. Brown and the Grand talk about special education. This is, um, something in some respects similar to it, but a, a little bit more broader in terms of, um, uh, student well-being. So thanks both for being here tonight.
A second. Tracy, could you put up the presentation? Just a second. Okay, okay. Christine's just having technical difficulties. It's good to see everybody. I feel like I was just here. Um, we've, you know, while Christine's kind of putting her presentation up, um, I feel like we've done different versions of this presentation at this point, kind of going back four years, and I think, you know, we scaled back a little bit of it just because we've talked about some of this data a few times, but- Additional questions about some of the state, national data, we can do that. Do you want me to start? Just one moment.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so our, my, kind of our overall goals for the night were to talk a little bit about, um, some of the state, national data as it relates to kind of student well-being, um, and some of the mental health, um, data that is out there. I know that, you know, if anybody's watching the news over the last couple of years, that's really kind of like the leading headline about what's happening with our youth in the country. Um, going to talk a little bit as it relates to the state, talk about how it's relating to us here in Wilmington and in the community as well as in the school district. Um, talk a little bit about ongoing challenges, which I did mention in the last presentation, so that's kind of fairly brief, and what our response has been over the last couple of years, as well as really the bulk of it, talking about the family engagement specialists, which I think was really the bulk of the presentation tonight. Good? Yeah? So, um, you know, I know over the last couple of years, we've talked a little bit about, um, you know, mental health and the increase in mental health. I think if, you know, we think about the last few presentations and times that Christine and I have been up here, it has been around, um, the pandemic, and I think that's what we've typically talked about, kind of what has been happening since the pandemic. But we actually, when we looked back in some of our data, we actually had a presentation, really two, but one big one, kind of before, um, in the year before the closure and everything that was happening, talking about the needs of our kiddos, um, and the increase that we were seeing. And I think if you look at some of the information that's out there about mental health, they're talking about even prior to the pandemic, the increase in, you know, things of like depression, anxiety, suicidality across the board in all age groups, um, but specifically, obviously, with us being focused in, in kiddos in the last 10 years with a 57% increase in suicide rate in kids, which is a horrifying statistic. Um, you, you know, layer in the pandemic to that, and we're, we're talking about crisis levels of, um, services that are sometimes not available, as well as, um, kiddos that need to access things, families that need to access services that are just not able to be easily, readily available in a system that was already taxed prior. When we look at, um, you know, there's been a lot of, obviously, like, federal funding that has gone out, and a lot of the money that has been spent by public school districts has been related to, um, the mental health services, increasing in things like counselors, social workers, providing, um, curriculum for students. And, and when surveyed, uh, two and three schools increased that they, indicated that they increased the amount of mental health services available, a lot of the funding that was available over the last couple of years. Um, the last kind of, uh, thing I put up here, which I think is interesting, because there's been a lot of conversation about what has been going on. I think, you know, the person to figure that out was going to be worth a lot of money at some point, or 100 years from now when we all look back, or they all look back and say, "What happened?" Um, I think some of the, you know, there's a public school in Seattle that's actually filed a lawsuit against some of the big tech companies like TikTok, Instagram, Facebook, you know, and trying to hold them accountable for the content that our kiddos are seeing, the things that they're being exposed to, and linking that to the impact of the mental health crisis at this point, um, for students and children.
So similar, um, we're seeing the state is still facing, um, this crisis. Excuse me. So just recently, there was an article from the Boston Globe, um, shared that many people are still awaiting um, and using, um, the, um, hospital emergency rooms and awaiting psychiatric beds. So they also shared some statistics here. Sorry, it came out a little-
Yeah, that's funny.
Okay, here, but I'll read from here. So, um, more than 2,000 Massachusetts residents die each year from opioid-related overdoses.
Okay. All right, that's what's throwing me off.
Um, community mental health centers, um, have waiting lists numbering in thousands, and the majority of adults seeking behavioral health care in recent years were unable to get appointments, um, when they needed one. Sorry, I don't know what's going on with my computer, like. Also, there's a really state-led effort by Governor Baker. I don't know, uh, many of you might have already heard about this, but there is a roadmap for behavioral health care reform, and just recently, in January 3rd, they, um, really are, provided greater access to care for Massa, Massachusetts residents. Um, so they designated 25, what we call CBHCs, um, their community behavioral health centers. Locally, our Wilmington residents are, um, served by advocates, and they also came up with a help, helpline, uh, for the state. So they're trying to avoid, um, really, the ER and, and how can we best support mental health kind of emergencies in a care center, um, along with a helpline? So it's not just a line that you call to chat about what's going on. They're really going to connect you to care, and possibly an appointment, or to come out as a mobile crisis team. So we've been using advocates, um, for many years, but it's really great news that they're getting additional funding to help support these efforts. Um, just recently, we had the Family Engagement Specialist refer a family to go in-person to Waltham. They were seen immediately, and within two days, they received an appointment. So we're, we're already seeing kind of the benefits of having the center, um, available more frequently, 24/7 hours, um, per care, and, uh, the helpline has been a huge resource. So just all the information is listed there.
Um, we're hoping that, um, you know, that that continues. I think we, we've had some experiences this fall where we've had kiddos that have required some psychiatric hospitalizations and have waited two to three weeks in an emergency room while they found a placement for that child. So, um, you know, I, I'm hopeful that this is maybe the start of kind of looking at the system as a whole.
The system, though, too, has always been broken when it comes, comes to children with-
Yep.
Mental illnesses and/or, um, but I, I think the, this times, I don't know, eight, 10 years ago, where it was a week's stay in the emergency room. Now that, it's even more extensive, it's even scarier.
Yep, absolutely. When we look at, you know, I, I put the, kind of the new normal, and I put this because I feel like when we kind of came out of the pandemic, we were all in a little bit of a fog, saying, "Okay, we're trying to adjust to what's happening. We hit the next school year." Okay, so like, now we're in a hybrid, things will look a little bit different. We're now a little bit of a distance out and beginning to see, kind of, we look at our data, we look at what's happening in our schools, we look at, you know, we have enough connections with other school districts between some of our professional organizations or connections that we have. This is happening everywhere. This is not, you know, unique to Wilmington. I put our data up here just because I, I think that's what we are the most focused on. Um, when you look at the YRBS data going to 2000- When you look at the YRBS data going to 2017, our rates of students just on this data point has consistently climbed as it relates to students, you know, 10% of our high school students, 11% of our middle school students have actually made a plan on how to commit suicide. So, that's a scary statistic. That is also a 21 data point. I'd be curious when we repeat it in this year, what that looks like. I certainly hope that that has an increase, but the trend is concerning. A third of our students in the high school and a fourth reported that their just overall mental health was not good most of the time, right? That's a lot of kiddos if you think about your kids' friends. And of them, a quarter of them are saying that their mental health status is not good over the period of time. We've seen, you know, our new normal, so to speak, is a lot of crisis interventions. So, I put some statements in here just and I can explain some of them. I think that our counselors do unbelievable work in our buildings. They have done preventative work in terms of working for, you know, doing classroom lessons on how to get along with somebody else, how to access support, how to advocate for yourself as part of their ongoing work. We definitely saw a shift just kind of prior to the pandemic, certainly continuing where a lot of their time and continues to be working on intervening in kids either in crisis or kids maybe almost in crisis. And it was dragging and I think continues to. Some of those more preventative things that were part of their daily schedule, maybe six years ago, let's say. That has impacts in our ability to be preventative. We have added over the couple of years, even prior to the pandemic, a couple of counseling positions with the middle school. The Battle was added, the Battle Early Childhood Center was added when I was, when I came on board, really because I think the trend was starting even kind of prior to the pandemic. Our clinical staff requests for mobile crisis, we do take data on all this, are continuing to be very high, significantly higher than they were pre-pandemic. If we actually looked at the amount of time mobile crisis teams are intervening, it's probably actually lower than it was over the last couple of years because they can't, if you don't get to them before 7:30 or 8 o'clock in the morning and you have a crisis that happens at 10, they cannot come out. They are completely booked, they're unable to come out. They will ask you to have a family either come to them. Now, as of January, that's a possibility. Sometimes they just say, go to the ER. So, the amount of times a clinical staff would want mobile crisis to come out versus what's actually happening would be two different data points if we were to actually ask them that information. Are students kind of requiring any kind of physical intervention, right? So, when we look at, you know, our safety care trained staff, about 38, 39% of our entire staff that would be eligible to be safety care trained is trained as a district. Buildings have building safety teams. They also then have, most of the buildings have a variety of other additional staff that are also safety care trained. So, specific programs, most of our program staff is trained at assistance on teachers. All of our clinical staff is trained, administrators, I'm probably forgetting people in that group. So, I think that there has even prior to me always been a focus on making sure that we had a lot of people that understood how to de-escalate children, how to do it in a way that's safe and appropriate, it's developmentally appropriate. And I think the district did a significant commitment to, we have our own in-district safety care trainer, which is great because when somebody needs to problem solve something, he and the team of BCBAs or clinical staff go out and actually meet with the program or the staff or the people that's working with that kiddo to process things. If we look at the data prior to the pandemic, we had years of zero. We averaged in the five years prior to the pandemic, about four and a half restraints as a district. We had 51. We have done 35 as of today. And we're only halfway through the school year.
So, 51 all year last year?
Yeah.
And what is it, the number now?
We're at 35 as of today. And we're only halfway through the school year. So, I bring that because it's a, it is the end of the spectrum when we have someone that is completely out of control. It is the last resort intervention. It is after everything else has been tried. And that data point doesn't talk about all the kiddos that the interventions have not reached the point of restraint that we have that are happening inside the building. So, we're looking at, you know, tenfold increase. Really, I'm going to be honest with you, if you look at the data pre-pandemic, in the five years trailing, we have zero, three, I think it's four, one year of 15, which was actually only three children of those 15, and then 51 last year. And we're on pace, unfortunately, to do similar this year with a tremendous amount of increase in supports and training.
Can I ask you, does this data point only house the children that fall under the?
District-wide. Yeah, where the hub, I probably should say that, so we're the hub of kind of all that information, making sure that, yep, they contact us when typically things are happening. You know, we typically have people that go out, will help. Even if the teams are perfectly functioning, we go out just to kind of support what's happening in the buildings because it isn't something that people do lightly, you know? And just community-wide, I would say if you, you know, we sit on, Christine, not myself, sits on some other committees and I think that community-wide, they're seeing crisis response community-wide continues to be pretty high, even outside the school district. Our district challenges, and I don't mean to be repetitive, I know I talked about this kind of in the last, I think we continue to see the need for families and children for mental health supports. Therapy, family therapy, wraparound services continue to be wait lists or not available at all. We continue to have some staffing challenges in some very specific positions like school psychologists. And I think the impact on staff is then the biggest need that maybe sometimes goes overlooked, that all of the people that are managing all of this on a daily basis are staff, they're our staff. And so, I think that continues to be, maybe challenge is not the right word, but I think it's a significant impact.
So, there continues to be a strong emphasis on social-emotional learning and supporting student mental health. Obviously, to improve student academic success is our ultimate goal. So, connecting kind of homeschool partnerships, I think, is critical as we emerge from the pandemic and if we're still facing some of these challenges. Providing outreach and referrals to parents and really kind of being that team player to provide wraparound services has been crucial to our, to our district and has been something that I think is important in education moving forward, is what we're going to see. So, when we talk about wraparound services, it's really care planning and coordinating multiple services outside of school to help support the child inside of school. And as this quote reflects, really, I'm sorry if it's blue a little bit here.
You've learned our lesson on blue today.
Yeah, I know. And really having comprehensive services are no longer optional and they must become a regular part of how our school operates. So, I think that kind of resonates with us moving forward and what that looks like as a school system. So, we're continuing to respond, as Ellis mentioned, some of the challenges that we have and some of our district initiatives that we're doing to support kind of the district-wide social-emotional learning and mental health needs throughout our district. So, we have professional development activities listed on the left with district resources in the middle and the curriculum that we're doing as a sample. So, really, our professional development continues to focus around social-emotional learning for parents and staff. I did want to make mention of one Parent Guarding University event that will be upcoming. Christine Elliott has steerheaded a committee of district administrators to really support our first annual event that will include a Saturday in March. There will be a save the date coming, but really an opportunity to families to come into the building and learn about our initiatives, what is going on in the district. Having a keynote speaker, we're excited to bring Katie Greer, who's an internet safety expert, to the district to really talk about, I think that can hit from pre-K to 12. You know, our little ones are on technology, our older ones are misusing it. So, how can we really, you know, have some education for families on that? So, we continue to provide professional development. As far as our district resources, we've been, I think with the pandemic, just, you know, really fortunate to have some of these initiatives really play out in our district. So, Care Solus is a care coordination system that we've been utilizing. And just looking at the data, the warm handoffs really just indicate our staff referrals to families. And then the number over to the right is the appointments that are going into care. And we've already exceeded this year, families getting appointments into care. So, I thought that was really, and we're on track with the warm handoffs as well. Here we are in January. So, some of our other initiatives are listed there, but we are using Panorama as our SEL data system. So, it's really coming into play in multiple ways in our schools, through our AST process, through, as we just heard in our previous presentation at the middle school, and how this really can reflect some changes and supports needed at a district level. But it really drills down at an individual level to look at supports and interventions for students. So, we've been really fortunate to have that intervention in place. We have a Bright program at the high school that really supports kind of the students coming back from hospitalizations. One thing and why I note that is we get all the professional development from Bright for the district. So, it's not geared towards just a program. It's really all their professional development, support groups for families. And we try to push those out as best as possible. So, also as a district resource, we really have our district PBAS and SEL teams working hard at tier one, kind of sustaining those efforts that we've had for multiple years, but really looking at our tier-two non-academic interventions in place. So, the teams are meeting, it might look different at each school, but we're looking at, you know, how to really focus in on, kind of, we're looking at, it relates to Panorama and that's why I'm pausing here, but some of our relationship building with Panorama gives us the tools for kind of sense of belonging. And that comes into play with our PBS teams as well. So, we might have a check-in, checkout system for a student, an intervention in place for someone that might not have a relationship with someone in the building and really just kind of check in six weeks, see how the student's doing. And this all kind of takes place through our instructional support team, kind of looking at what interventions students need. So, the teams are really looking at that data consistently. Our clinical staff, as Ellis mentioned, is a huge resource, probably the number one resource that we use for students in interventions. So, we're trying to expand other efforts, similar to that check-in, checkout system I was talking about. We're having regular ed teachers check in with students and see. So, it's not necessarily just a clinical staff member, building those relationships and rapport. Obviously, something we're excited about and we'll be talking about tonight is the impact of our social-emotional learning and family engagement specialists. We were seeing an increase in the need for, for mental health supports prior to the pandemic. Pandemic hit and that was one of the recommendations that Alice and our team kind of put together from our office. So, that's been a great district resource to have. And then on the right just shares a list of the curriculum that we're continuing to use. So, I want to make mention, obviously, family engagement and strengthening the partnership and promoting well-being is a focus. It's, it's part of our district strategic plan, it fits nicely, these positions with that objective of social-emotional learning and the culture of inclusion. And it really supports, DESI has in 2020 put out a strengthening partnership framework, really to support our youngest learners through adulthood. So, here is listed what their definition is of family engagement. And, you know, basically, it shows that the relationships can develop into meaningful partnerships. But I really want to skip down to effective family engagement is culturally responsive, collaborative, equitable, and respectful of diverse languages, norms, and values. Effective engagement strives to eliminate barriers to participation. And these engagement practices take place in schools, in the communities, and wherever the students live and learn. I just make mention of that because I feel like the positions are aligned nicely with both our district plans and the framework that DESI is trying to get out to schools. The graphic up there just kind of shows their guiding principles of the framework. Underneath, they've identified some key elements. Those key elements then are in the transitions and family engagements. How can we support families with that by using the key elements? And then it builds into capacity. We look at staffing, professional development, and how can we maintain the structure? So, they've really given us a structure and a framework to look at family engagement as a district. Again, it's not a one-person job, right? It's, it's really something that everyone can benefit from different ways to engage our families. So, that being said, there is a training coming up that myself and the two family engagement specialists will be attending. It's a train, train, train the trainer model. So, that will give us more information on this model and how we can bring it back to the district and really have administration and teachers really working on this.
So, we wanted to shift a little bit to talk about clinical supports and kind of the roles in the district. And so, by no means is this a comprehensive list, for those of you that are watching at home, of kind of everything our clinical staff does. I think it's impossible to capture that for really any of these roles in kind of a couple of slides. There's a couple of distinctions in roles in the district that I know most of you know, but just to kind of, to kind of review it. We have school counselors and then adjustment counselors, social workers in the district. We also have school psychologists. The difference with school psychologists is the evaluation piece, the psychological evaluation piece. They are the only ones that can conduct those evaluations. Their training otherwise is actually very similar to school counselors, school social workers, social workers or adjustment counselors. They're able to do the counseling, all the consultation kind of. Their roles across the board are extremely vast. They do everything from obviously, you know, parent contact, connection with teachers, working with students individually, maybe working with students on IEP goals and objectives, working with students that might have a kind of a short-term need, might be mediating a conflict between kiddos at the playground. You might be, you know, running some social skills groups. When we looked at the development of and the kind of the identification of this role of family engagement specialists, they are all also clinical by training. And so, similar in some respects based on their orientation and background. So, there is some overlap, but what we tried to do is not just essentially take a school counselor and create another person called an SEL, a family engagement specialist. Also, to make sure and hold true to the, those individuals that do that within the district and not feel like that was being taken away from that group, so to speak, if that makes sense. There is definitely some overlap. I would say that the difference, and you can look at, you know, the kind of the list of things from the 30,000-foot view of the family engagement specialists, is the level at which they get involved with providing and helping parents and families coordinate, set up, and access resources that honestly, while our school counselors would love to do that, they don't have the capacity. They might have 200 kids that their grade level that they service or they might have 300 kids in the building and they're the only counselor. So, our SEL people have done a lot of family work, a lot of home visits, lots of going out to help parents that maybe are having difficulty from a language barrier navigate a medical need of their child. And we have a couple of very specific examples of that. You know, meeting with collateral agencies who are involved with the family at the family's house, making sure that that information then is brought back to the school so that whatever would be appropriate for the school to know to be able to service that kid inside our school buildings is happening. That level of involvement with families has, I don't think it necessarily ever existed in this district. I just don't think we've had the capacity for it necessarily. And as the needs of the communities and kids climb, you know, we are seeing lots of DCF involvement in families, things that we didn't see before. Paul and I are, you know, responsible for doing the best interest determination for kiddos that might be being placed in foster care and the group home in the district. The numbers of that are the highest I've ever seen for the amount of meetings that we've been doing for those kiddos that have lots of other collateral agencies that maybe we had a couple of kids a year where that would be an issue. And I don't know, we've done probably 15 in the fall alone. So, we, you know, the level of intensity, the level of case management that they're involved in is very different than what I think we've ever had to do. I think we may maybe have a couple of pockets of people. Let's say we have a social worker here at the high school that services a specialized program that maybe has done kind of that level of involvement. But I think even what our SEL people have been involved with even surpasses what she would be involved with just given the nature of her job. So, we made an attempt here and obviously, it's, it's hard to kind of separate it all out because it's, you know, there's so much of what they do is supporting families and. supporting families and they could be doing 10 of these things on one family or one-on-one family, if that makes sense. So we tried to kind of separate it based on student, staff, and district, what they're doing inside the schools, if that makes sense. You know, they do run, they're involved in everything from helping the principals to identify kind of alternative remedies, given the new suspension law changes that occurred in November. What are preventative things that you could do as plans to develop for students so that we prevent a behavior from happening again? To make sure that they have kind of a bank of things and options. So they participate and in some cases run some of those remedies within the buildings. They are available for crisis management. We're going to talk about kind of the structure of their position in a little bit. After-school hours, I do, I know they do a lot of after-school hours with families. Families can contact them. They're pretty readily available. They do tours on kiddos that are having difficulty maybe coming into a school and they might meet with a child that might be a little bit school-phobic multiple times outside the school day to kind of help that student be acclimated to the building. Things that are harder to do. Not that our staff doesn't do that, but I think the volume at which they do it is higher. They've done a lot of professional development with with staff. Everything from, most recently, as of the last staff meeting at a couple of the schools, they did trauma-informed care in the classroom. They're they're kind of doing that at all the buildings. They have a few more coming up. They've done Panorama training, obviously. They've done trainings on 51As and, you know, what is something that's file-able? How do you go about doing that? What's appropriate? What's not? They've done CBT training for both educational assistants and teachers. They did a couple of very specific just EA trainings as well, but for the other trainings, our EAs are involved as well. They just have done some separate trainings for them. We've done non-physical restraint de-escalation training with the staff, which I, we've always kind of run that, but they've kind of taken the lead on that with some of our BCVAs to provide all of those de-escalation strategies and skills that maybe don't, you know, everybody would benefit from having those. I think when we think of safety care, we think of strength training. It's not really what all it is, right? It's a component of it. And it's really the other skills that are most important when you look at those trainings. So they're doing the de-escalation component. For the district, they are heavily involved in our social emotional programming throughout the district, our special education programs throughout the district. From everything from involved with the families, collaborating with clinical staff about how to meet kids' needs. Those kiddos are complicated from a mental health standpoint, so trying to bridge the gap between maybe what's happening at school and what the parents might need. Sometimes, you know, kiddos that maybe have some challenging behavior, there's a need to be a little bit of a relationship repair with the district. I think that they've been instrumental in that. They are also our Alice trainers for the district. And they also actually wrote the, with Christine, the gender support planning guidelines for the district. So this is kind of a 30,000-foot view snapshot.
So we want to look at, you know, what they've been doing in the schools, but also with our families. So it's been, they've been crucial in helping support families navigate kind of the medical, mental health and social service system. They provided outreach to over 150 families, and that was just solely from our wellness surveys both years that we've done. More specifically, you know, that number broken down may vary by school depending on needs and where some of the families might require more short-term intervention. Other families are requiring more of that wraparound support and ongoing support, I should say. But currently, the family engagement specialists have between, I would say, 40 and 60 families on either side of the district that they're actively working with. Each. And some of the outreach is listed here on the slides, but really being that person, that team player, coordinating the home visits with outside agencies, being a part of the team, really to help a parent navigate some of these situations, such as working with DCF, DDS, which are state agencies that help support youth. Really referrals to some specialized programs, assisting with navigating healthcare and insurance. So there is a wide range of of really high-level support and knowledge that they have that they're offering to our families. And then the parent workshops that have been offered as well. So there's been a variety of supports for families in our district that that I think has really been crucial in in helping to support their needs.
One other thing I wanted to add, which I was supposed to mention earlier. They work with families. Sometimes they're not even inside the district. So we have parents who maybe that are working on that early intervention to coming out of early intervention into our preschools or being in that process that have reached out. They've had some work with some of those families. They work with our other district families that are, you know, experiencing crisis. So their access to us can come from a variety of ways. I think Christine's going to talk about that in a second, but they kind of run the gamut, which also is somewhat different than some of our in-building staff in terms of their ability to be accessed by outs, people kind of outside the district, if you think of it, not actually placed inside the district at the moment. Whether it's because you're an EI or, you know, in and out of district.
No. So some of the benefits of these positions are that they have the ability to follow not only a student, but their family as they move up to different buildings. So they're not just building-based in the district. So they can really target families-based supports. We have two on either side of towns. Either each side of town, the Beltwell Shashi and West Middle School and High School, Wildwood Wubin Street North, Middle School and High School. So that's our current structure that the family engagement specialists have been following. They have time to coordinate together on on different things. I think they balance each other out nicely with their skills that they have. They do work 200 days annually, so this helps. They're not in a teacher contract per se, so they are available limited time over the summer that they do check in with students to help provide with different transitioning. Students that are, last year, for example, just a couple of students difficulty transitioning from school to school, and she met and did some Zoom face-to-face interactions with them. Also, school vacation, they're able to work on those days as well. So there are flex hours within, outside of the school day, which has been really crucial for those home visits and and visiting families after-school hours kind of to accommodate their needs. So typically, the referrals, I just wanted to mention this, if if families are listening and how to access them. So we yearly put out a family wellness survey to really gain some understanding of what families may need and what resources, professional development, they might need. There is a staff referral process. There's two forms. We have an IST form process that we're using, but also this family engagement specialist created their own. So if, you know, a staff member needs help with coaching of Panorama and how to use the system, they can fill out that form and it's just another way to access them for staff. Administration and staff have also provided referrals. Our office has provided referrals, that meaning that we sometimes will reach out to a family engagement specialist and say, hey, you know, a family reached out to our office. They might need help with a certain topic or or something. So there's also direct parent outreach. So they might contact myself. They might contact the principal directly. Sometimes we might have a classroom teacher really, you know, experiencing some difficulties and and they'll reach out through either the IST process or the form that they created. So that's just a little bit of a way to our referral process and how it works. I know you were asking a little bit about that. If you have specific questions, I'm I'm happy to to kind of talk more about that. And if anyone else has any questions.
Sometimes it's just email. Off of our newsletters, you know, I think people see the newsletters, so.
Yeah, but typically, I would say it comes through our IST process in the building base unless a parent reaches out. So we feel like these positions have been extremely instrumental to us, to our families, to our students. We do have some experiences that we listed here. They are kind of rather long, so I will just take a minute. We we took a few sentences out of some experiences that we've received from our families, our administration, and also some of our staff members. So there is, due to confidentiality, we just left out names of our engagement specialists and also the families. But they have had a tremendous impact. Quote, "You give him hope and vision to tread with fortitude and loving kindness for those who helped him along the way. We are forever grateful for all your support and selflessness" from a parent. From an administration, an administrator, a building administrator wrote, "Our family engagement specialist has been amazing addition to our schools. At the blank school since September, she has worked with over 21 families." Blank has been able to find 12 out of the 21 families outside services such as disability services, CARE-SOLIS, and working with outside agencies. She calls all families and checks in on them consistently and is readily available via email or phone. She responds promptly and professionally, understanding the sensitive nature around these discussions. She assists administration with wraparound services. Her background knowledge on school counseling, leadership, and family engagement has been essential." And our last one here from a clinical staff member. Quote, "It's it is helpful to have someone with a similar lens to consult with about how to best support our students and their families. It strengthens our support as I'm able to meet our students' needs in the school environment, and the engagement specialists can provide resources and supports to the families with their abundant knowledge of local resources outside of school. With respect to transitions, the students in our district face many transitions between schools, and the SEL and family engagement specialists provide a wealth of information and help to bridge the past, present, and future connections as students transition." So I thought those were just some quick highlights to share. And I know we do have a lot of transitions in our building. Typically, our process is, our clinical staff really have time. We have CIT time for placement. I just wanted to make note of that a little bit. Because we have so many transitions, the clinical staff does meet with the other building to discuss, you know, any kind of background knowledge. However, the family engagement specialist really has that family piece of greater knowledge that they can carry throughout school to school. So yes, there is time to consult building to building on on those student and family needs. But the engagement specialists have been really crucial to kind of build those transitions from school to school. We might have one in, you know, Beltwell and one in the middle school, and just having the background knowledge of the family and what they're going through has been tremendous. Thank you. Just wanted to share those.
We had, wanted to add, since we had you as a captive audience and this is going live, their next event is February 7th on developing executive functioning skills to support success at schools. And that's Erin and Sarah Jean. It'll be here in the large group instruction room. Or did you not raise your?
I peppered them with questions already.
With regards to this event, as well as the one that you are hosting in March, I know the speakers have certain contractual. I would call them writer and back in, you know. It would be great if it could be televised, something that could be rebroadcast in WC TV, because I think those who would, who really would benefit most, again, it's always been that perpetual, you know, how do you, you know, it's so difficult with one's schedule that can be so unexpected with, you know, whether it be kids on the spectrum, but I mean, even to regular parents, it just becomes conflicting. And I really wish that even if they won't, because I think parents learn from parents and their experiences in in group sharing and question and answer and venues. And I really think opportunities like these type of, even if we could have a little library of these of these pieces, I think would only further support the education of both parents and and, you know, in in learning what they can do. And and this could only support that that growth, you know, and you have to sometimes like, I didn't quite get it. Let me review, you know. I really, and I really do, I think some of these speakers are really pivotal, especially in an age where parents are looking for answers and even students are looking for answers and as they grow to to know themselves and their difficulties and their whys, that they may not be so forthcoming teenagers can sometimes, you know, carry that. But I really do think, and I just a comment that as you know, I work at one of the major hospitals in Boston, and we recently received notification, this is probably just in time for Christmas, that certain mental health support services, both for staff as well as the outside communities, that there was no accessibility at Mass General. And we have a lot of staff because of the pandemic. It is, everyone's impacted. I think healthcare is no different if in what they've seen. But to to really, I mean, they're trying to find the web-based virtual sessions for staff and or the broader community to access. But when one of the major hospitals in in Boston has no capacity for this realm and at a time where society is so desperate for it, then it just elevates what the public schools are trying to do within their own communities in finding accessible resources in a timely fashion. So I do thank you for putting out a lot of lines so that there are different pathways to access and try to find timely help for both our families and and students alike. Thank you.
We actually went back and forth about this event, right, in our office when we were talking with them, I think. They're very interactive, so they really want people. We would, we do it, do we do it a hybrid where it's like televised? They were worried, I think, that people wouldn't come in person. So, yeah, we can look at a recording thing, if that's an option, you know.
Some sessions we do record, based on presenter, they they have a few recordings that we have online and listed. We try to keep a library. Some some presenters that we bring in have copyright, you know, so we can't video, but we usually try to ask and provide access to that as much as we can.
Do you have the hyperlinks on this? I don't know if you forgive me, I haven't gone.
Yeah, we have some up there. Yep. I think they really want people to come. So I think they're going to do a big push to try to get people in to make it interactive, you know, ask questions, feedback a little bit in person. And if it doesn't work, we'll go back to, I think most of the ones they've done so far have been virtual, so.
Thank you. This has been really helpful to to really understand what our family engagement specialists are doing, how they're supporting the schools, but also the clinical staff because so, you know, I I'm really proud of our district because we are really well staffed in terms of clinical support. I I had asked Dr. Brand's office to just provide me, or maybe that was you that provided that. But just like a list of like every building and like who's in there and who's doing what and how does this complement that? And I'm, I was like floored by that number of 40 to 60 case, you know, a caseload of 40 to 60 students and families for each of them really kind of shocked me, which just, I think, speaks to the the need right now. I I, I don't know how to say this in the right way, but I feel like they are, they're doing so much. And I wondered, like, as this position sort of evolves and grows, you know, it's new to us this year. No, not really. We had it mid-year?
No, we had it all year. We had one person.
Okay. So I'm just thinking, like, how do people know their lane and like, how do, you know, how do certain kids have access and families have access to the the engagement specialists? And it's sort of like, how are they working in tandem with the school adjustment counselors to sort of say, I'll take this one, you take that one, how, you know, and I'm sure you're tweaking that and they're working together and figuring that out, but as a clinician and as a consultant to schools, and I never sort of get that deep into, you know, direct service and whatnot, but I think like, how are they doing that? How are they figuring that out? And is there a process to sort of say, let's access our family engagement specialists for this particular situation? And then when do, you know, the school-based counselors are expected to to pick it up, right? So and just how that, those relationships are kind So, and just how that, those relationships are kind of being navigated. It's just a thought that I'm having and no expectation for you to answer it. But I think it's, it's pretty incredible. I, you know, I was wanting to make sure that they were being really utilized and accessed, and clearly that's not a problem.
I think, not to, I mean, we can jump in, I, I think some of the delineation is based on the reason they're referred or the reason why somebody might be going to them. So I think there was definitely a little bit of that at the beginning with the clinical staff and administrators a bit. I think as we've start, started to kind of see their work with the kinds of issues that they're getting involved with, with families, that I think school counselors would not have the capacity to do. Or in some cases, they were working with a kiddo who really needs kind of this other layer and they're pulling them in for that. There's, I think there's always gonna be overlap when you have a little bit of clinical, you know, clinical staff. I think we've had, I know it looks like a lot of people, but I think we're a relatively small district, so I think they have really good relationships with the people in the building. So I think the ones that are maybe less clear, they work out. Sometimes it's, you know, what makes sense in the short run, so do they see some kids? They do, it's usually kind of a little bit more of a short-term acute crisis situation in order to connect them to other supports that might be outside therapy or something like that. So I think some of it is, you know, there's certainly a process, the IST process. I think the building and the clinical staff knows how to access them, but some of it for us is also driven by why we want them involved, is the reason why we involve them and not a school counselor, let's say. Juvenile court things.
Do the two of you sort of gatekeep that, to sort of say, you know, because I could picture like teachers being like, "Oh, let's send that to the family engagement specialist," and then they're sort of like, you know.
I think that, at the beginning, I think the principals were kind of coming to us, like, what do they get involved with? What do they not? I think now they, they understand it, I think the teachers know how to, you know, they typically would go to a clinical staff member in their building, and then if it needs to go on from there, then the principal or the clinical staff might refer, or they might come through IST. They also sit on the IST teams. So, you know, something that is gonna be a regular, your typical school counselor issue, they would probably be less involved with it. Things that become systems issues, I think they become more involved typically. I would say, you, you would be more, but I, I would think now I feel like we have a lot less of that, trying to figure out who's doing what than we did a year ago.
In year one, we were more going through the building administrator to say, you know, "How is this process going to work?" You know, it was a brand-new position. But right now, I, I feel like people have a pretty good understanding of how to access.
Great, we're very lucky in our town to have this layers and layers of levels of support for kids, so.
Positions are great, but individuals are wonderful, which is a separate issue.
It seems that way too, yeah.
Sorry.
Very much for all of the information. Couple of quick things, so when I see something like on slide six where it talks about 10%, 10% of high school students and 11% of middle school students, so it's suicidal ideation, it leads me to think about the needs at fourth to sixth grade, because these things take some time. And so if we can focus and, and have some attention there, then hopefully we can help impact those numbers. And, and then it's fantastic that there's staff support involved in this as well, because clearly they're dealing, they're, they're seeing this in the classroom, and so they need help themselves. One question that might seem random, but there's a pretty good link between nutrition and mental health and behavior and academic. Have you guys had a good review with the food services about what we put on the plates in the lunchroom? That might be another opportunity to impact. And it really does touch, there's been some districts that have done some things where they've fully flipped their menu and seen dramatic shifts in the number of behavior incidents and improvements in academics, but it's, it's an opportunity that we could maybe explore. And then just a real simple mechanical request, slide five. Can, can maybe for next week's packet, we get another version of this document? Because in our version, you can't read and any of that.
Yep. We'll change the colors. Is it a color issue on that?
The colors, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Yeah. And then with that, but also on slides eight, 11, and 12, there's a lot of terms of art that you guys know super well, and some of us know some, but particularly for this purpose, but also for maybe that university, having a glossary, because some parents may not even think of, "That means that's why I have access to that thing." If they don't know what the thing is, then they don't even know to ask about it sometimes. So a glossary of a lot of those terms and would, I think, would be really helpful, just either attached to this or the university or both, something like that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Actually, let me go to Mr. Smaha, who hasn't.
I'm just gonna make a comment to Mr.
Okay. Sure, go ahead.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna. I think that, I know that this has come up in previous meetings where Mary Palin has been invited to discuss her approach to the district. And I know last, I know at one of the wellness committees, it was stated because of the pandemic and trucking, the access to certain foods, but it, she does recognize it. But I do think that maybe in light, that perhaps we can have, have her come invite her here and, and perhaps add to Mr. Turner's questions, concerns, you know, and how it may relate on the overall picture.
It's what you get when you read the food service warrants.
Mr. Smaha.
Okay, so I, first with a comment. I just, I have to like write down my thoughts, because I'm not, I'm not good, just, I have to have them written down first. First of all, thank you so much for this presentation. Like, this is a really, really complex issue that I thought this presentation did a very good job of giving an overview of what's happening from nation, state, to what's happening at the school. So I really appreciate how this happened. So not only like is this complex, but it's, it's scary information too. When you look at what, what Mr. Turner's just talking about, with the 10% of high school kids, 11% of middle school kids having some sort of suicidal ideation, not even just ideation, but having a plan, which is really scary. Having a third of students say that their mental health is not good most of the time or always. That's some really scary information, and it's nice to hear your input on looking at this and saying you're impressed with the number of services that we offer, and I really appreciate that. And I appreciate especially this ending piece about the family engagement specialists and sort of highlighting them, especially in light of going into this budget talk, right? Of really seeing these numbers, and then when people say, you know, if enrollment goes down, why is a budget, why does the budget go up? Like, this is, like, this is the reason, right, right here, and it's, and it's very real. I had one question in all of that. Is on the new normal slide, there was a part where it says that there was a shift from being able to provide preventative care and early interventions to more reactive measures. And I just want to make sure that the reason for that is based on sheer numbers of students needing service, needing services of some sort, right? It's not like, "We used to do this thing, that was great, and we decided to do away with it," right? It's, that's solely based on numbers. You just aren't able to do the preventative stuff that you, we used to be able to do because of numbers. You just gotta react.
So you're, let's say, a school counselor at one of our elementary schools, and your schedule is built so that you're going into three classrooms during that day to do lessons, right? Social emotional lessons, could be panorama lessons with the class, or, you know, something, something that the class might need or the school might need as a whole. And you're having multiple students that are now, where I would say even a few years ago, that wasn't necessarily the case, that are in crisis or having some difficulty. Then your day is flipped a bit. And, you know, when we look at our, you know, physical intervention data, the length of time that those kinds of episodes take, never mind the students that never get to that place that are escalated and require, you know, tremendous support. Those people are involved in all of that every day. So no, it's not.
Okay.
In any way, I should have probably sort of worded it differently, but yeah.
No, I just, just clarification.
Yep.
I'll just jump in here for a second. I don't think I knew until reading through this presentation that the Family Engagement Specialists had that flexibility kind of built into their daily and yearly schedule, that they had hours outside of school hours, and that they had a 200-day contract rather than 182-day contract. Because I think that I can, I can see immediately the benefits and the advantages of having that, of having that flexibility, both summer and, you know, weekend or after school, I mean, like basically having that kind of flexibility. Is there, I mean, are there other, do we have other employees who have a similar thing? Or is that kind of a?
No, the union contract dictate kind of their hours, so I think that's why.
But for non-union members, is that kind of like a little?
No, I can't think of anybody that, I mean, there is nobody that I've written a contract for that has like, you know, they have very specific amount of hours that they can flex outside the school day. I think they go way past that. But no one, other than administrators, that I can think of that have kind of that kind of flexibility in, in their contracts that I'm aware of.
I mean, that obviously gives, gives sort of a, a unique power.
Right.
They can exercise that, that others can't. Mrs. Bertsch.
Just to add on to it though, I just think, considering what they're doing and, and seeing that, what you're seeing are more elevated dysregulation where physical restraints are involved. I mean, the numbers, even that's alarming, and it's just distressing to see so many kids, kids in, in crisis and struggling in, in an environment of which they should at least feel safe within. But I, I just, I think that, and I, and I thank, I thank them for being, for being 200 days, because I think having that access and consistency throughout the, I mean, mental health doesn't get out of school. It just continues, if not sometimes worsens for certain families, depending on their, their situation through the summer, through those non-school days where there's, that may not be as structured or a place to go. And I think it was ever more so vital when we, we were closed down to the pandemic, and Mary Palin and her rock stars were out with the food, with food, and, and just seeing, you know, the need, which I think is just so vital. And I, so I do think that their role plays such a critical piece in trying to keep the ship righted. It may be a rocky storm, but at least, you know, it's not, you know, sinking, you know, although it could feel like it, I'm sure, in some cases. But it is, I think, consistency and accessibility, even if it's minimal through the summer, that I still think that it's a, it's a really a necessity in, in order to make everything that they do work, and you know what I mean, effectively so, but thank you very much.
I agree with you, just even with the pandemic, seeing the creativity that our staff had of how we were reaching out to families, when we were, you know, were we calling them on the phone? Were we getting on Zoom? And, you know, just the creativity that they had and, and the need now for, for the engagement specialists kind of continuing that work that was, was started during the pandemic is, is kind of what we're seeing into play here.
It's, it's great, just the evolution, and I, and I think, because that's what makes a community come together. And I think we, I think I, we will see, continue to see evolution as things continue to play out and as we continue to work and build to, to meet those needs. But, and I just thank you, I think it's, it's actually at least a really strong foundation. It may not be the complete foundation, because, you know, we've got to be fluid, right, Ben?
Use a lot to know.
It's my new buzzword. No, but I, I thank you, because it is an ebb and flow situation, unexpected, unanticipated circumstances. So thank you so very much.
Christine, thank you, Allison. You know, the foresight that they had a year and a half ago, it was with these positions. We, no one knew, of course, when we were walking into it. They had a sense and their, their leadership and keen sort of sense of what the needs might be. I think we have for, for the committee to know also, as I've come to learn, we are indeed, I think, a leader, it sounds like, in, as a district and community pushing this direction. But we're not alone, and it sounds like other districts are absolutely bringing online, even by the same title, these kind of positions. So I think we're in a good place, and I think the other thing that these have provided a capacity for is indeed a challenge that you all know well and we all know. Having these, the multitude of schools that we have, the stops and starts, it, it, you know, it adds another complement of, of challenge that these folks have clearly been able to step into to provide more continuity vertically, if you will. So thank you for your work on this presentation, everything you're doing.
Thank you. Actually, sorry, do you want to take a break? So it's, it's 9:45. I would entertain a motion for a five-minute recess, were someone to offer one.
I move for.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, the committee will recess for five minutes. All right, the committee is back in session. Dr. Brand.
Thank you, good evening and everyone. In the packet, there are, there is a memo that provides an update to the committee and the community on where we're at regarding fiscal year '24 for the budget for next school year. In the interest of time, I know it's a late night at this point in the evening, I'm gonna fly through this fairly quickly, that I think the memo speaks for itself. Tonight is not the presentation of the recommended budget, but merely intended to be an update for you as a committee. Just as a couple of reminders, in December, we presented to you, the last time we were here, in fact, an over preliminary increase of 4.98% or just a little bit over $2 million over the current fiscal year '23 operating budget. As expanded upon during that presentation, there are a number of termed budget drivers that are putting pressure on this budget plan. In no particular order, they meet, they include meeting contractual obligations contending with the considerable state-supported special education tuition increases and expiring ESAR COVID, COVID grants respectively. There are, as part of this budget plan, two groups of positions that we are including and recommending to you for consideration as part of this budget. Obviously, the family engagement specialists, as, as extended upon in the previous presentation, are included in this budget plan, the 2.0 FTEs. In addition to that, math tutors, as also we've shared previously around what we believe to be the value add for those positions as we continue to try and support as best we can student learning as well as recovery. The financial forecast for the town, of course, becomes an integral piece of this whole puzzle. We presented to you the preliminary budget, and as is customary in the past, we as a department, one of many, then go before the town manager to better understand what he believes are the fiscal resources that the town can support for respective department budgets. In that conversation, we had, just prior to the winter break, the special, or sorry, the, where the central office administrative team, thank you. We, we learned that 3.75% over the current fiscal year is, is a level of increase that he believes that the town budget respectively can support. That obviously necessitates the need for our administration to make adjustments to this original plan that was before you. That difference between what we presented to you as part of the preliminary budget and now this increase represents $565,000 that we have to make up, trim, make adjustments to align with, however you want to put a frame around that. Our efforts have been ongoing as administrative team to try and bring in line our budget increase overall, and we will have that before you for, again, the recommended budget next, at the next meeting next week. Specifically though, some insight in terms of where we believe that we can identify those savings are highlighted on this slide, I won't go through them all in the interest of time, but they do span positions, they do include positions, rather. Obviously, what has not changed despite this need is that we are so largely driven by salaries. We are people business, the bulk of our resources are of course tied up with, with individuals. And so when we get to this kind of significant adjustments, half a million dollars, we unfortunately do, do have to encroach upon staffing and adjustments therein. There are some non-salary items that are also captured in the adjustments that we are making to fine-tune this budget, and they're captured here. Expanding the circuit breaker funding offset, a slight adjustment, which Paul will talk about in a moment, in terms of the transportation contract. And we did have an additional complement of funds in the preliminary budget to help support strategic plan-related activities, and we have decided to drop that, not eliminate it completely, but make an adjustment downward for that. So the current budget plan as it stands right now, that we are preparing to bring before you as a school committee next week at the January 25th meeting, represents a 3.75% increase to align with the town manager's request. As a superintendent, I will say that I do believe that we can make that, and we believe that that is manageable with some adjustments. We are targeting specific reductions related to enrollment-related staffing and alignments, and I do believe that we both can and should make those adjustments. Certainly, the budget plan that's gonna be before you does also, though, include a number of staffing adjustments that we've profiled before, and we can return to that next week. But essentially, where we're landing here is a neutral, net neutral, if you will. But essentially, where we're landing here is a neutral, net neutral, if you will, staff adjustment. Finally, again, January twenty-fifth is in terms of what's next. January twenty-fifth, school committee meeting, will have before you the recommended budget. January thirtieth is scheduled to be the town manager's budget presentation. And then February fifteenth is scheduled to be the budget hearing here in this room and the school committee vote on the FY twenty-four budget hearing. Final piece that I'll just add to this, not captured in these slides specifically, but does have to do with our capital planning.
Actually, Dr. Mann, could, could we pause here and maybe just have any, see if there are any questions or comments on, on what you've presented so far? Mrs. Burns?
So I, I do have to, and I know it's never easy when you have to review and find out where you're going to take away in order to align with the request from the town manager. But I, in light of just the, the presentation that Alice and Christine just presented with regards to the real-time statistics within Wilmington and the broader society, and, and just the, you know, especially the increase in physical restraints and dysregulation. I'm concerned, knowing we're out of district, not that that's where we want to go. We want to try to keep everyone in district because it is, it is really truly the best for our students if we can do so safely. But like the circuit fund break, funding offset, that concerns me with regards to tuition and what the state typically gives to districts. That's always a very, it's always a very serendipitous number to put down because more than not, we tend to go over. It's similar with council. You know, I know for many years, we budgeted consistently at a certain number and just as consistently, we had gone over tens of thousands. Not that you anticipate it, but there's certain, some expectations that you can, and transportation contract reductions. It's difficult, I guess I'm a little weary only because knowing that, going out to bid or we did bid? Okay. Between that, looking at school start times, looking at the transitions that our district has in the foreseeable future, I, I, you know, I don't, and I know that there's a plan of action that fits into this box, but what if it doesn't? What if there's a more of a need or, you know what I mean? I just, you know, maybe we, we, we deal with it in the next budget cycle, but you know what I mean? I'm just, I'm worried about this upcoming, well, the fiscal year twenty-four. You know, the way things have transpired, they haven't evened out. Do you know what I mean? There's still ebbs and flows, I guess.
I do. I completely do. I think that there's, I think you bring up a, a number of things in the circuit breaker. Certainly, there's risk in that, right? There's risk in that in terms of going out on a bit of a limb because we don't know what the foresee, the foreseeable future will bring. I would say, though, that I, I think the important thing is when we're, when we're now making that strategy that comes obviously with Paul's belief that we can do that. And I think that's important to put out there. But that should reflect to you as a committee that we think that we're at the end of the line. And that we, and, and I, and I use my words deliberately, we're making some reductions relative to what we believe we can and should related to enrollment. But if we didn't have the circuit breaker aspect to be able to make adjustments to it, or if there's additional downward pressure, we are, we, I really do believe we are at the end of the line. If we're going to try and maintain our funding to support curriculum and related professional development and keep our programs and services moving forward, and if we're going to retain the staffing that we have as part of this overall budget plan, we are at that point. We are, we, I, I think to, to the credit of Paul and the, and the respective team, you know that we were contending in here with some significant increases. We are holding the line and even less than the line, knowing what inflation is still going to bring. So this is by no means a, a perfect budget plan and there is lots of concern with it. Do I think we can do it? Yes. But it comes with some sacrifice. But it also comes with adjustments we've been able to make, make to maintain or bring on the staffing that is incorporated with those, those ESER grants that are falling off, like the family engagement specialists. But, but we are, we are at that point. I really think, I can say that safely. And I think that the circuit breaker, incorporation of that circuit breaker adjustment to expand upon that should reflect to you that, that we're, we're at that point.
Mr. Chair?
To say I'm very frustrated with the town manager would be an understatement. I, I, I think the budget that was originally presented, considering the fourteen percent on the out-of-district placements, being only five percent, considering the general inflationary scenario we're in, I felt was very, very, very responsible of the district and, and a really, really appropriate. And in some ways, might have been too low. And so to see a percent and a quarter coming off of that is frustrating, to say the least. If there were further downward pressure, I would be very unhappy. I appreciate the diligence to find those cuts, but it is really disappointing.
Could you talk a little bit in more detail about the strategic plan reassessment? About what aspects of strategic planning that, but he might have gone to or what the thinking was behind that reduction?
But I, I would say this, that we have, over the last couple of years, with, with the goodwill and support of this committee, been incorporating or including as part of the budget plan, an allocation to, to provide us with the tools and means to support endeavors or initiatives connected to the strategic plan activity. The equity audit is an example of that. So, so we, we again, put together as part of the preliminary budget and allocation, and I, I forget the exact amount that we included in that plan or, or in that, that budget plan with you. But we'd have trimmed that a little bit, you know. I will say to you that we don't have an articulated or specifically defined, a list that we think that that funding could or should go for, but it will be associated again with aspects of what will become the strategic plan. There's still money in the account, uh, there's still money in the budget, though, to support. It's, I forget the numbers, though. I don't know if you can share them off the top of your head.
It's split between curriculum and professional development, so I believe it's fifty thousand total.
Misses, yes, Mr. Chair?
I forgot to mention earlier in that moment, I do really appreciate the way you guys presented that information. Coming back from what you presented the time before and showed us how we got from A to B, that was fantastic. Thank you very much for the way that was put together. Appreciate it.
Next week, you'll have something similar to that. You won't get a book again. You'll get a book for the budget hearing, but you'll get a synopsis of here's where we were, here's what we had to do, here's where we are. And I think, as the superintendent said, we, we can make this work. And one of the things, you know, we've always been conservative and we always keep into, take into account the town of Wilmington, too. Because, you know, it, it's taxpayers as well. And we really never asked for more than we need, at least since I've been here. I've never done that and the school committee's never, you know, gone that way. So I think whatever, when we present next week, it's what we believe we can support. What Glenn also, what the superintendent also said is, I don't think we can go anywhere else without being some dramatic impacts to developing, providing services or what have you. I don't know where we're, but I, I think what we'll present, we, we can deliver on that.
Talk about capital.
Sure. The one thing that is not captured in these slides is an update, but as you know, is part of our overall budget package is out of capital submissions. Specifically, just to provide you with a brief update as a committee, one of the things that the, early on in this process, I guess the budget process, that the town manager conveyed was his, his approach, his thinking, strategy, what have you, to incorporate as part of the school district's capital plan, the total amount for any Wildwood interim solution that would take Wildwood School through until a new building is brought online. I think as most probably recall, the, that number that we last left it with was approximately $1.1 million, which was associated with the plan that, we'll call it option seventeen, the many options that was identified to have the Wildwood School housed between both the West, the Western Media School and the middle school. And, and so, in, in other words, as part of the department, our department's capital plan going forward to the town man, as, and as part of the town manager's budget, that approximation of $1.1 million for the Wildwood interim solution has been carried, if you will, in our overall capital plan. In a discussion that we had with the town manager late last week, we, we came to learn that the town manager has adjusted, if you will, changed his position on what he, he believes he can support as part of that overall capital budget line for the Wildwood project and shared with us intention to reduce that budget line by, by a fair significant amount. And so that caught us by surprise, I will admit, and share with you as a committee. We have a Wildwood Building Committee scheduled tomorrow evening. We already had one scheduled, but it was desperate to honor services that I mentioned earlier. But this adjustments to this plan will certainly be a topic of conversation tomorrow evening with that meeting. In, in short, the specific intent by the town manager, as he's conveyed to us, is to make a, a change in that plan specifically to forego any of the construction costs related to the bathroom or restroom facilities that were part of that middle school plan. So that has left us indeed in a place that we are circling back on reevaluating that plan. It's not the plan that you as a school committee had approved, nor was it the plan that the Wildwood Building Committee had approved. So I, I share that with you in the context of a budget update. It's obviously more than that, but it's a budget update as it relates to capital. And that's it for the updates for the budget this evening, but happy to take in further questions if you have.
Questions? Mrs. Burns?
So thank you for sharing the correspondence with, from Mr. Hall with the rest of the board. I have to say, I'm a, I'm a bit godsmacked. I'm a little irritated at this late juncture. I absolutely have, I'm in line. I, I understand the rationale about the investment in the middle school of only which, you know, once it no longer serves a temporary, permanent purpose, having to put more money, expend more money to refit it, to refix it. But, and I think what irritates me is that this late juncture, this has always been, this has been on the table for months, for many months, even when we got the actual cost of, of, of the project. And I attended the meeting on December twentieth, I believe, you know, which I was fortunate to make. And there wasn't any concern at that juncture in, in this line. And it's, and I'm a little concerned with some of the, and I know it was in, well-intended, but I just think it's with some of the suggestions that Mr. Hall made that really truly aren't even viable considerations. I worry about what this impacted this state of, you know, at this time is going to have on, on our middle school staff and the Wildwood staff. And some of the things, which one of the suggestions he brought up was the bathroom piece. And as we know, we, we have to have the restrooms outfitted for five and six-year-olds, if not younger. And to utilize a bathroom near the middle school cafeteria and excluding it only to, for the Wildwood students only, creates a whole nother level of impact for our middle school students who, you know, when nature calls or if there is a, a, a physical accommodation that they may have a medical condition that requires urgency. We can't anticipate, we can't expect these kids to go to the second floor bathrooms, which is what be, what is being recommended. Great, did I know it was probably just a, you know, throw it up at the wall and see what, what sticks? But that idea of opening up the second floor bathrooms for only the middle school students and removing that first floor bathroom by the cafeteria also contributes to students roaming the halls unsupervised for restroom breaks, whether they, they go before lunch. You know, they only have, what, fifteen, twenty minutes for lunch? So that impacts the time from going from point A to point B and having less time to, to socialize, to, to have a downtime, to socialize with the friends, to eat. It also opens up the, the gateway that they'll be late in getting back to, to class if they have to make a restroom stop on the way. And that impacts time, learning and teaching in the classroom. I mean, there's a whole host of other things. ADA is an issue. We can't possibly have a staff member monitor that. That would change working environments and possibly create, you know, an issue contractually with, with our union. And I, I, I don't think we should have to be on the threshold of, of that possibility because I think it's disruptive to the teaching and learning aspect that we're trying to gain from this. And my understanding and looking at the other options presented, the other options presented were far more expensive. And I absolutely, let me reiterate, I absolutely understand that, you know, putting money in and only to have to put money in to, to convert it, it doesn't make a lot of sense. But we have to educate these children and we have to give the staff the ability to do so and to collaborate. Because all the goals, and even the goals that Dr. Quirk and her team and her staff are trying to do with regards to the, the program piece at the middle school, that will all be impacted. And I'll be damned if we're going to lose time and, and efficiency and progress in meeting those goals that will benefit the learning for our students and will contribute to the mental health port, pos, no, it all, it's all together. It's all intricate, but it, it could risk the work that we're putting, it, it would lessen the impact that we could potentially have in these goals and the work that's already been done in laying this down. And between ADA, between, it's, it's just, it's impactful now, they're impacted now. And they're going to be more impacted even if this were to go through. And if it doesn't, then it's a whole other cluster that we have to deal with, which will take us away from the operations and the efficiency and effectively of what we're charged to do, which is educating students, supporting staff and families in that role. I just, I just, I think this is in very poor form. And I think this is bad forecasting and preparation for a conversation that has been before this committee. And I, I trust the committee to drive it and I don't mean to speak out of turn, but I, I just, they need to take into consideration what this means, what this means for, for now and then. And forgive me, I'm a little, so little, like, I, I just still can't process the, the fact that this is coming at this late stage in the game when that conversation should have been done months ago. So thank you for letting me speak.
Ms. Barnes?
Yes, I think that this is a significant blind side. I'm going to just restrict my comment to like a budgetary issue. And I will reserve the rest for the Wildwood committee meeting tomorrow night. But I think that has to be put into perspective. So we, we have an entire building of children and staff that has been shut down in this town. And we were charged with, with the responsibility of being able to educate them for the next five to six years. And essentially, what this means is we've been given a budget to do that of $500,000 to, to essentially problem solve the closing of an entire building and educate students in another format. And we've been allotted $500,000 to do that. My mind is just a little blown by that. And my questions that I have and, and hoping that Dr. Brand's office and with Paul's help can provide some informa, or I think it's actually Mr. Hooper's department can provide some information on sort of an average cost that we were having to expend to run the Wildwood. And I'd like to understand over an average of five years, what does, what are the capital costs for the past five years? And in my mind, and I'm not a numbers person, we should be allotted that amount of money from the get-go to work with for the next five years. And then some sort of allowance beyond that to make sure that the educational programming is at its optimal. Because we can't compromise that. We cannot compromise the quality of the education because of the unfortunate circumstance that we're in. because of the unfortunate circumstance that we're in, we are a town that should be able to provide that kind of a resource, my other concern is really around process, if, if, I, I feel like everything's essentially happened backwards, we've expended so much money hiring the services of Doran Whittier to crunch this and crunch it and figure it out and present us all these options that never would have been feasible anyway, and if, if, I, I really respectfully would have preferred the town manager had put some parameters around this to say, this is what we have to work with, and, and it's just been totally backwards, so, it's definitely frustrating and concerning, and, you know, I'm, I'm really not comfortable with this, with this request, and I look forward to tomorrow night.
If I just may, really quick, I did make that request to Mr. Hooper, that you, you mentioned, we spoke earlier about the operating costs, and the other thing that I should have said at the outset, in discussions with the town manager, and I was forthright about this, that, you know, we, we have to, this is more, and I can understand completely that this aspect of restroom facilities for the average community member that might be tuning in right now might be sort of scratching their head to say, well, why, or how should this be such a problem, I would bring attention to the fact that if we were a K-8 school, of which you can find around the Commonwealth most certainly, or a pre-K-8 school, you can find those, those arrangements, but, I can, I can assure you that there would be separation of spaces and restroom facilities and such, so that there's not co-mingling between, between a pre-K and K child and a middle school child, logistically, that creates a, an issue for us, and the other thing, perhaps most importantly, that I said in my, in our conversation with town managers, that if for some reason we cannot figure this out, and there is no shifting on the budget, and I, I don't wanna jump ahead, but, what I do want the community to be aware of, and use the community to be aware of, that has not changed in my mind, is our ability to just maintain, in the locations that we are in, the three locations for the Wildwood, for the duration of the next five to six years, we cannot do that, we will be impacting adversely the programming and services of our, of our, of our Wildwood students and families, this is not an option to continue in the current locations that we're in right now, and I did reiterate that to the town manager, sorry, Mr. Turner.
First of all, I very much appreciate that last comment, 'cause it is, it is critically important, we have to do something better than what we're doing, I really appreciate your passion, Ms. Burns, and I really appreciate your thoughts on the numbers, I reiterate those, if we, if we, but, it's a fundamental developmental thing about a middle school restroom and a four-year-old, they just don't go together, literally, physically don't work, and so, it's, it's, it's the thought process behind, oh, we'll just use that without adjustment, is mind-boggling, but I do, I do think that there's a, a mental process on, if you build a building and average the cost over X number of years, if we're building a space for these students for five years, a million plus potentially some number less than that to undo what we've done, is still far less than any other building project amortized over the life of a building, it is a cheap option already, even with what his secondary concern is, anything two or three times higher would still be in line with the use of a building for five years, so, it's, it, it's, it's already cheap, and to cut it by half is stunning, to your emotion.
But by construction paper for the walls, I mean, I just, forgive me, I'm just gonna...
Mr. Smaha.
I, I agree with everything that has been said tonight, and I really appreciate it, and I, and I think that you, we're, when we're both with the budget and then with this, with this Wildwood plan, it's like, we were already bare bones before, and it's like, you know, it's really sort of, I think, shocking in a lot of ways to be asked to do it with even less, you know, like, it's already here, and now we gotta do it down here, like, what is that saying about our priorities as a town and as a district, you know, priorities, people put, the way that you say, we value this thing is when you put money behind it, and, I think that we're, in through this, the changes to the budget, through the changes to the Wildwood School, I think that we are in many ways devaluing our, our community and our schools, and I think that, you know, I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna repeat what people have said, but I agree wholeheartedly with the comments of my colleagues tonight.
I'll try to not go on too, too long, given what everyone else has said, it's understandable that no one likes to spend money to refit a school that then in five or six years will not need to house kindergarten and preschool students, and that therefore either has to be kind of, you know, dealt with in a, you know, not its proper form, or to spend more money on top of that to retrofit it back into a full middle, full middle school, it's completely understandable why that doesn't feel good, that's not, you know, there's some money that you kind of feel good spending, 'cause at the end of it, you really just think, we're gonna have this bright new shiny building, you know, or whatever, you know, whatever it is that you're getting for it, and there's some money that you really just think, like, God, I hate to spend this money, but that doesn't mean you have to spend it, it's like, sometimes, you have to do it anyway, and Wilmington is in this position because of its own failure to address the Wildwood situation when there was time to do so, and the Wildwood can, can was kicked too far down the road, until the building deteriorated to a point that we couldn't educate students in it anymore, and that is simply the situation that we are in, and the bill has come due. My objections to the specifics of this are on two grounds, one is the substance of sort of this, our new plan being proposed, as Ms. Burns says, it makes the middle school worse, one of the things that was really important about the plan that we approved is that a lot of effort was made to minimize the impact on the middle school, it couldn't be completely eliminated, but a lot of effort was made to minimize the impact on the middle school, so the middle school experience was not going to be affected too much, and we have a lot of important work that we're doing at the middle school, we had a presentation tonight just about that, and so that's really important to keep the momentum going at the middle school, and, you know, changes that are going to negatively affect them are very important, it's also going to, of course, negatively affect the Wildwood program in the school, even if we assign the main bathrooms outside the cafeteria to Wildwood students, they can't go there by themselves, that is around the corner, out of sight and out of hearing of the area of the school that they're going to be in, so students cannot use the bathroom without being escorted by an adult, so teachers will have to stop teaching their classes to escort students to the bathroom, to, which again, still need to be refitted so that students can get on them, because they can't be climbing on stepstools to get up to the toilets or get up to the sinks every time, so it makes the Wildwood program worse, it's going to make the middle school program worse, and, the sys, the plan we already approved was a compromise to begin with, it wasn't some kind of Rolls Royce, well, we've spent, we've solved the problem, everything is gonna be great, once we, you know, implement this plan, it was already a compromise, we were already splitting the community across two buildings, we had already cut down the playground to something fairly minimal for cost, to get the price down, we had already said, well, I guess we can get away with a much smaller structure, even if they have to use it a classroom at a time, it's like, the compromises had already been made to get it to that point, but it was something that we thought, you know what, but this is something we can do for five or six years, and I, that's something that, I don't know, it just seems to be forgotten sometimes in these discussions, or it seems to be forgotten, that these, this is the plan that is going forward for the next five to six years, so that's the substance, and the last point I wanna make is again about process, that a process was put in place months ago, that we were going to have a consultant to help us look at our, explore our options, that we were going to pull together this building committee, or rather, actually use the same committee that we already had for the MSB program, because it had all the stakeholders there, so we had representation from the select board, from the finance committee, from town administration, from the school administration, building principals, school committee, permanent building committee, public buildings department, everyone is at the table, and for months, we spent time evaluating the options, and countless hours were put in analyzing all of the possibilities and finding out what they would cost, and at the end of this process, the Wildwood Building Committee voted on a recommendation to present to the school committee, a committee of, by, by the way, of course, in which the town manager was a part, was at the table for the entire time, and then a recommendation was presented to the school committee, which voted to approve it, and as far as I'm concerned, that is the end of this process, the school committee has voted for this capital item, and that goes forward to town meeting on a warrant article, and there is no, just at the end of the process, the town manager just throws out the plan, and just says, no, here's the new plan, that is not at all the way that this process works, and so, I think I will stop here. Any further comments? All right, then let's talk bus contract, Mr. Rogero.
Thank you, as you're aware, we went out to bid, our contract with North Reading Transportation expired at the end of this school year, so we went out to bid in middle of November, we had a bid opening in the middle of December, and we received two bids from two different companies, North Reading Transportation and North Suburban Transportation, in your, in your packet is an analysis of the cost breakdown between the two companies, and North Reading came in about four hundred thousand dollars less than North Suburban over a three-year period, so, we have recommendation, or recommended motion to accept my recommendation, I recommend going with North Reading Transportation to enter into contract with them, the contract will be for three years, but we do have the option of two one-year extensions similar to what we had the last time, and exercising of those options are, will be done by the school committee, with a recommendation from, you know, from the business manager at that time, so, my recommendation is to, to enter into a contract with North Reading Bus Incorporated for Student Transportation Services. Any questions?
Mrs. Burns?
I was gonna make the motion and discussion.
Would someone like to make the recommended motion? Mr. Burns?
Oh, no, we're gonna make a recommendation, and then this, it goes for discussion.
We'll have a discussion after.
Fine, yeah, yeah, okay.
Motion by Mrs. Burns, do we have a second?
For me to read it?
Second by Mr. Turner? Sure, please, please read the motion.
I, I motion to accept the recommendation of the Assistant Superintendent of Administration and Finance to enter into a contract with NRT Bus Incorporated for Student Transportation Services.
Motion and a second, discussion.
Just a quick question, this is all about the dollars and cents of it, is there any other substantive changes to the prior, like, in terms of other details, fuel surcharge or any of those other things, or are those all standard boilerplate?
Yeah, it's, it's a similar contract, although we did have stipulations in there that school start times may change, location of school may change, but for the most part, the, the contract, the, the, the bulk of the request for services, invitation for bids is similar, we did make a few little adjustments, but there is a fuel escalation clause in there, as it wasn't the last time, and Lisa Ferretta had some other minor changes that we incorporated into the request for, for bids.
Is there any sort of non-financial, I mean, other, I know it has to mid, meet minimum stand, standards, is there any issue about, like, different companies having better records of staffing or on-time performance, I mean, obviously, school busing has been a nightmare across the state and the country, I mean, my youngest daughter likes keeping track of how many bus drivers, she claims it's ten so far, I'm not sure if I believe her.
Well, she may not be that far off.
She may need a math tutor, no, I'm just kidding.
But, but it, but it might be, but, you know, I'm not saying that that would overcome four hundred thousand dollars worth of difference in the, in the contract, but I'm curious if you look at some of those qualitative differences.
Yeah, I think it's, I think every bus company's dealing with similar issues as far as just having drivers and so forth, we do have in the contract, you know, I think we're gonna be getting newer buses, as, as part of this with, with North Reading Transportation, I think our, our invitation bid said that the buses had to be, I don't know, whether it was five or seven years old, but, my understanding is, North Reading Transportation is purchasing newer buses for us, you know, who knows when we'll get them, just with lead times and so forth, but, you know, and we, you know, you have to go, there, there was nothing in there, you know, it would be difficult to prove one way or the other as far as performance and so forth, the, I just think that, you know, almost every bus company has certain issues, North Reading has been good to us, you know, even though your daughter might have many different bus drivers, for the most part, we have the routes covered, there have been occasions where, you know, if, if someone calls out sick, especially in the middle of day, Lisa may have to consolidate routes, or if something happens, but, North Reading's been, you know, really, I think, very accommodating to us, and, and does the best they can for, for our needs and so forth, so, I don't have any, I don't have any concerns with...
We know how to work with them, we know the relationships we have with them, if there's not a good reason to move, any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor of entering a contract with NRT?
Second?
Yeah, we have, we have the second.
Thank you.
We'll adjourn the second before we go, all in favor of entering the contract? All right, that is unanimous.
Yeah, thank you, Paul.
I would like to suggest that perhaps we postpone subcommittee reports until our meeting for, meeting next week, if the committee does not, if there's no objection.
I'll move in second.
All right, hearing, hearing no objection, we will skip over subcommittee reports for this week, correspondence?
None this evening.
All right, future school committee dates, January twenty-fifth, one week from today, one of our rare one-week gaps, regular session meeting here in the large group instruction room at seven PM, and our February fifteenth meeting, which will also be the budget hearing, at seven PM, also in the large group instruction room, so, with no other business here, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved?
All right, all in favor? All right, we are adjourned, thank you.